Okay, we're just coming out of the closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, lease, or sell of real property and character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. And so we will open the special events workshop now. The time is three oh two P M. And this one is regarding the real and repill and replace chapter eight point one six special events of the Grand County General ordinances. And we will start our workshop at this point.
Are we gonna have um? I I know, I guess their special events coordinators are Alicia and Janabeth, right? Or or one of them gonna be present?
Alicia.
Oh, Chrissy, yeah. Great. Okay. Awesome.
Hello.
Hello.
Would you like to join you or up here? What do you want? Just open the doors.
I want to thank you, Mike, for your willingness to do this. I think this is just a much better way if we're gonna make radical changes in ordinances. I think it's nice to workshop. You know, so thank you.
All right, just so you guys know, most of you know who I am. A few of you might not. I've been in the county attorney's office as a civil paralegal for a number of years. I was. I worked on the very first draft of this and have worked on all of them since.
There've been a few.
Yeah, so that's why I'm here. As far as some of the things that we I just I sat down with Mike last week, um, I think you guys have copies of it all, right?
Yes.
Okay, so sort of the way it seems the most efficient, I gave you guys some options. Um, and if you guys don't like them, obviously, let me know. Um, some of the options that initially came in, um, they don't really work with timelines. Um, so for the first one, let's just start at the top. It came to me that you guys wanted to switch to a hundred motor vehicles, five hundred daily attendance. Um, it started off as two fifty and fifty, split the difference on that three seventy five and seventy five motor vehicles. Um, did you guys have thoughts on that or?
I I oh, you feel very? I I do, yeah. I to me, I think, um, no, I like I like I like the thinking. I like I think I like thinking of meeting halfway, but to me, I think there's a lot more impact in fifty vehicles than there is in in two hundred and fifty people. Um, I think I think as far as two hundred and fifty people go, I think the county absorbs the the numbers there a lot easier than it absorbs perhaps, you know, twenty five more more vehicles. So so when I was thinking about this, I think I'd be I'd be much more willing to to give on the number of people and even move that up to five hundred if we stayed pat on the number of vehicles or perhaps only increased it by maybe twenty percent up to up to sixty or so.
Yeah.
And in that, I I actually am not against the the higher people count, the lower vehicle count. But, uh, in conversations of where people were getting held up on special events, I needed, I mean, Chrissy, I haven't talked about this, we needed more clearly defined on and and notice that, uh, county owned and or managed facilities. Uh, I'm gonna keep calling O S out, Angie's online, she can actually hear this, uh, are not, uh, if the event was wholly contained within O S, it needs clearly defined that it's not really the special events policy. Like, if they want to park a hundred cars in their, I I don't know how many O S can park fully, but I know it's more than a hundred cars, uh, and have people and have facility use and I think current seating thirteen twenty thirteen fifty.
Sure, right.
If if they're in the arena, it's not a special event. It's a, I mean, it's its own facility, it's an event facility, but it needs more clearly defined away from special events on that point.
If one of one of the things just still be helpful to know is are you you want us to count the vehicles that are participating or do you want us to consider the vehicles that are traveling there? It's five hundred people that aren't gonna get there in fifty vehicles. Uh, are we looking at restricting it based on X number of motorcycles, X number of U T Vs, X number of cars in a car show? I mean, if you if you kind of, uh, wanna list that out, we can consider them in a different way depending on what the use of the vehicle would be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I think it's much more easy to quantify the number of vehicles that are actually in an event than it is to, I mean, you can't, it's it's pretty nebulous is that, I mean, you might have four people a vehicle showing up or you might have one, so that's that'd be a pretty kinda, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Yes, uh, yeah, on the vehicles, uh, I think, you know, everybody's memories are short, but we had not that long ago, huge numbers of emails, even petitions, uh, every you guys aren't having it, I mean, every day we'd have three or four emails on complaining about noise. And that's not happening now, and I'm really glad. But I think a lot of the reason it's not happening is because of the things we've put in place that have prevented them from, you know, has lowered the noise. And I think one of one of the things that we put in place is the special event ordinance. That's why I want to be real careful when we change it. I would rather be cautiously changing it. And then if we find that there's no not a lot of impact, maybe revisit the numbers again next year. But I think going increasing something by a hundred percent is is just too big. You know, I I think sixty percent sixty vehicles in the event registered for the event. And, uh, like I said, five hundred people, I'm comfortable with five hundred people because there was a quilt yield just last week that had like two hundred and fifty, three hundred people show up, and I bet no one even knew what was going on. So I don't think, uh, so I I I'm just concerned, I want to really be cognizant of the fact that this was a lot of reason this was done was because of the outcry of our citizens about the noise in the community and the valley. And so I would, that's what I would like to see is five hundred people and sixty vehicles for that reason.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Brian and then Trish, you can come down and then Melody.
Yeah, just, you know, I I drive by, you know, up on the, um, like the bar M area, and I see, you know, a lot of the big running events starting there, right? And you're looking at way more than five hundred vehicles inside of that, but they're not, we're not counting that inside of the vehicle count.
No.
Right? Now, that doesn't make much sense because they are causing just as much congestion and traffic down here downtown as if you had an event that had, you know, two hundred vehicles that are part of the event. Just because the vehicles are part of the event, I don't think personally that it it detracts or adds anymore to the congestion. Still, it's still, it's still a spot on Main Street moving back and forth.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, we worked really hard on this special events ordinance for years, and I do believe we've come up with a system that's finally moving along fairly well. And I'm definitely, I think we're willing to concede a lot of points. I think we decided that, well, we won't get, we'll just talk numbers now, but some of the other points, I'm I'm okay with, um, you know, making the 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 system easier to navigate shorter. I'm okay with all of that, but but I believe when you ask for a hundred percent increase, you have to be willing to say, well, I'm gonna give on that. That's a huge increase. I'm okay with increasing it twenty percent. I think the idea that Mary gave, we do an increase of twenty percent. We don't have much backlash and it's flowing nicely. We could look at another increase next year, but I don't want to do something and and go from, you know, flop it over the side that we're then gonna have to be pulling on the reins. Um, so I think we're really willing to give, and I hopefully you're feeling the same way, um, because remember, things are going really well right now. They really are as far as special events. Um, and I'm more than willing to make some some compromises, but I I think with motorized events, we we just need to be very careful about that what that there were some events that caused a lot of impacts to this community in the past. And so, you know, and we've been really good. I don't think we've turned down an an event in a long time. Um, we really haven't. I think we turned down, I can't remember, it was like the Bronco one because they had some issues in the previous years. I think we've gotten to the place where we have a really nice meld of events, motorized, non-motorized, um, and I think, you know, it was it was flowing pretty good. So it's it's hard for me to turn over the apple cart when it's rolling.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Melody and then Mike.
Um, I I know that in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, our town was just crazy. I mean, there was the ATVs were everywhere, people were just driving around, and that's where a lot of the noise complaints came from. And since then, um, that's not happening. There's been stuff with the legislature that's made it so that people that are driving U T Vs have to have a card and and they're not, you know, they're they cannot be able to just go rent them like anybody just can't walk into a place and rent a U T V and go drive it around. You have to have your little, um, card that you took the test. And so I think there's been a lot of changes that happened since then that that help as well as the speed limits, the things that you guys have done. But ultimately, this isn't an intent to apply. So this is an intent to apply when somebody comes before the commission. We don't have all the answers at that point in time, and they still have to go through all the processes. So we're not changing any of the processes. We're just letting a person that wants to do an event, and I and I'm fine with the numbers, we can negotiate those numbers, but ultimately, I don't think that the commission needs to see everybody and approve everybody so that if it's my pet project or someone else's pet project, or we don't like that person, or, you know, we take that piece out of it, and we just let them say, I want to do this event, and I'm gonna go through the processes, I'm gonna get all my checks and balances through the sheriff's department, EMS, all this stuff has to happen that we don't know when they come before us for that intent to apply already. So we're just simplifying the process and letting people move along and get along with their their, uh, application.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead and then Jacque. I would just say that we've got a lot to get through here, so if we can keep our comments as brief as possible so that we can get all the way to the end of this, it would be appreciated.
I'll make it quick. Uh, in this, I'm making it easier for both application and participation in our special events process. Uh, I'm working hardest by talking to special event motors of all ranges and seeing where their hiccups were or where their unwillingness to participate in it. But don't think I don't know that they just go without a special event permit and go do these things without the checks and balances from Rhodes Department, the checks and balances from Sheriff's Department. I want them to partake in those checks, and no matter what the no matter what the ordinance, uh, we look towards the numbers, at any point, if a commissioner felt that they wanted to speak more about an event, the the ordinance lets us do that. We we can take away the yes or no or the authority of Jenny, uh, Jenny Beth, uh, special events coordinator position. At any time, we can say, we want to talk about it, and we can find out, did they talk to the sheriffs? And but we're trying to get more participation from this special events side so we can apply it to, can we 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 checks and balances? I mean, you need to go through the sheriff's department, you need to go through, uh, Rhodes, you need to go through, I mean, EMS, uh, we want to see those checks happen to more events, not less, uh, cause hands down, they'll avoid, they'll avoid the special events process if we make it, uh, too hard, too timely, too.
Yes, I guess I'd say, I I mean, I I think for me, the hangup is is mostly the, uh, motor vehicle numbers, but I think to Brian's point, congestion is definitely an issue, but I think it's more than noise. So even if we called out vehicles that were noisier, I mean, I think a hundred U T Vs on the streets way, way noisier than a hundred Teslas, for example, or or most other passenger cars, a hundred Harleys. I'm a VW bus guy, a hundred VW buses is loud, and I'd even throw that in the same category. Um, so so that to me i- is much more than the congestion. I mean, obviously, we have way more than than a few hundred, uh, cars visiting on any given weekend during the season. And then, um, uh, you I mean, I I think the cards made a big difference too, Melody. I think that's I think that's great, but Carter, no, I mean, a hundred people driving U T Vs with cards is still just as loud as a hundred people driving U T Vs without cards. And that's what we're talking here is is those kind of events. Um, and I and I and I and I'm all for making, you know, the intent to apply is is cool. I think I think narrowing it down from a committee to a single person and some of the other changes you suggested, I'm I'm not gonna argue with that, Mike. That's that's reasonable. Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on what you said, Melody. One of the reasons we did the intent to apply was because it was awful. It we felt horrid when someone had gone through this whole process, when most likely at the end of it, we were gonna say, no, this this isn't okay. We felt it was better to let them know in advance that, you know, your likelihood of getting approved is is pretty low. And that way, cause we were having like every, weren't we? We were having every other, every third, every fourth meeting, someone would come up and they'd have to come to us for permission to do an event. It was part of the process even before this process, and we wouldn't want it. We would think, oh, no, this isn't a good event this weekend. We already have this and this going on. But then we'd feel horrid because the person had spent all this time, all this money, all this effort to get to that point, and then at the end we say, no. So we'd oftentimes approve it even when we didn't think it was the best for the community because of the money. So the reason we had them applying for the permission to apply or however it's called wasn't punishment to them, but more of a way to prevent them putting all that energy into an event that most likely wasn't going to get approved. And, uh, as far as the the noise in the community, people being angry about the noise started in probably two thousand and sixteen seventeen when Mike Navarre was still, uh, was still, uh, chiefess and, uh, Mayor Dave was on as mayor. So there was huge meetings. We had meetings that filled the entire city hall, people complaining, screaming and hollering about the noise. So it wasn't just twenty and twenty one, it's been going on since two thousand and sixteen.
I want to make a couple of comments, and Trish, I see your hand, and one of my comments is, Trish, Mike, Mary, get my eye, and then you can lower your hand, you don't have to sit there for a long time and
Oh, thank you.
Give your arm a rest. If you get my eye, I'll call on you, I won't miss you, I assure you, I might mess the order up sometime, but it's not intentional.
It's like I was in third grade.
So I I will go after, I've said another than to Brian, then to Trish, but I do want to say, I realize that things are changing here, and part of the discussion around this is to open it up a little bit. But I agree that there's room for negotiation. I'm glad that Mike has brought that forward and that he's not just trying to pull this through. But to say that that there isn't a need to open it up a little bit is a little bit, I don't know if naive is the word, but we are seeing a negative growth in this county, and we have got to consider the fact that we have working class people that need some form of growth to be able to see something in their own lives as we see in ours when we get our three percent coal every year. So to ask the county to go from a negative growth to a somewhat positive, I think, is my point of all of this. And I know that we have a few very vocal and loud voices that like to voice to this body their displeasure with any noise in this county, but it would be nice also to see some recognition to the fact, because even I can say that I've seen some quietness that's happened in this town, and it has nothing to do with the number that goes by my house, it has to do with the fact that they're slowed down. And there's other areas that are making progress also. So we can't just always listen to one loud voice, we've got to consider everybody here, and that's why I'm saying just a positive growth. We're not asking for the average for the state of Utah is fifteen percent. That means that there's some people seeing twenty percent growth, and we're not asking for that of Grand County. We just would like to see a give back to a positive. When I say we, I'm talking the working class, I'm talking, and that's, I believe, everybody up here, as electeds, we're all working class. I don't know of anybody that's sitting on a cash pile, they don't have to go to work every day. And and so we're part of that, and to see that and to share it and to push it out in there and to work with those people that need to make a living and those people that don't, that don't want anything going on here, there's a balance there, and and it isn't just the one loud voice. So and then Brian, go ahead, and then Trish.
Stevens looking as well.
Okay.
Perhaps commissioners, we've got about forty minutes left in this workshop. You guys have, within the red line version, really five different categories. I don't know if it would be easier to focus on these five, but really, you're looking at numbers, you're looking at restructuring the committee, impact tiers, the intent to apply deadlines, and then regular
The regular, the full application deadline as well.
Full application deadline.
One thing, just really quick that I want to point out, that I think might ease a little bit of the discussion that's happening is, although we're only talking about a number right now, you still need to think about the ordinance holistically, and these definitions limit some of the conversation that's happening. The two hundred and fifty number is total, even spectators, people who aren't participating. So with that, keep some of the, like, don't get lost in forest, like, the the ordinance is, uh, you know, a twelve page document, so focusing just on the number when a definition will alleviate half the argument is sort of just something to think about within that.
Then one other thing to note is we we you will see this again. So perhaps if we could, if if the chair would like to structure the conversation based on numbers, we could get through the numbers piece, then the committee, and I can, that way we could guide through, because we only have like thirty five minutes left.
Yeah, I I would say get us through the numbers discussion. If you guys have got something quickly, and again, I will, I will reiterate the fact that there's seven of us, if everybody here takes five to eight minutes for their little spiel, we're gonna be working on this for months and months, and if that's the goal, then we're gonna go back to the hard way, and we'll just call for a vote in the next meeting and do it based off of a majority. So I I want to caution and ask that we consider moving this forward, and let's do the numbers, and then move on, and so Brian and Trish, and then
Can I can I make a quick suggestion? I think there's some things that, uh, I know I visited with Trish and Jacque and such. We're 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 willing right now to say, oh, we're we're good with that. I mean, getting rid of the committee, we're happy with. I don't think, right? I I don't think we need to go through a discussion on that. I think that's happy. What was some of the other things that I think we were comfortable with?
Are you playing the special events coordinator?
Well, no, I think there was that line item, and I I think we should go back. Let's do the numbers really quick, and then there was, um, there was a line item in there.
The impact tiers.
Yes, the impact tiers. Yes, I think we should discuss that. Okay, that'd be great.
Go ahead, Brian. Great, thanks. So I just want a clarification, where did the fifty come from originally?
Uh, so our our original committee did a lot of research, um, and it was, there was, I believe, twelve of us on that committee. Um, fifty was sort of the, um, the number that created, that created the, I can't remember where, Maureen.
I'm just wondering, was there some kind of negotiation with between fifty? Were you guys like, should it be fifty? Should it be a hundred? Should it be seventy five? What were, if you kind of remember, what were those conversations like?
Originally, the ordinance had, I want to say it was like a thousand people, and we needed a hundred and eighty days before, uh,
Okay.
It was, and it was really limited, it was done through the travel council, um. We came in and just sort of went, researched between, I want to say, Kane County, Aspen, Telluride, and Summit. We took their, what was working for them, and we created the original ordinance. Um, this, I believe, is the fifth.
It's confusing, looking through, yeah.
Yeah, um, at first, the process was I T A was quick, and the, um, actual complete application was the bigger piece.
See, that was my original.
And then it just didn't work out, so we made the I T A more robust and then created this sort of quick, um, final application process.
And that's what I thought, but just
And that's usually working.
And then once again, uh, Stephen there, so when we are looking at the, um, so uh, on this application, if someone says, I have one hundred people, do they have to say how many cars they're bringing with them on that?
They they have, yeah, they have the obligation for the number of people and the cars. And one of one of the hard things is often, now that people have found out the magic number is two fifty, it's always two hundred and forty nine people at that, or there's forty nine vehicles.
And if it's a motor vehicle event, that's where you
Yes, registered.
If it's like a race, you don't care how many cars are there.
With 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 some exceptions, because we did care about, uh, running out for error was one that triggered, I'm sorry, I guess.
So it was researched. It was researched.
But it speaks to my buy-in. I mean, you want people to
So I was there.
Oh, oh, okay.
I've been waiting. Okay, so I'm gonna make a proposal, and I'm gonna be quick, and, um, so I would propose the number to state I'm okay with saying five hundred daily total attendance or sixty motor vehicles. And again, I think it's it's like dipping our toes into expanding those numbers, and we see how it goes for a year, and then we look at it again in January of two thousand and twenty six.
Sorry, designation point between low and high impact, six and five hundred.
Yeah, not saying you can't afford that, obviously, but
Right. Yeah.
I I it's continuing work in progress. I I am actually, and I'm the, you know, biggest pusher of this in the commission, sixty motor vehicles and five hundred is is a good balance, uh, with the open willingness to, again, attend specifically the number. If that becomes an issue in both directions, if it's too many, or if we see unwillingness on both sides, we we revisit this coming into next year.
Okay.
I'm putting more work on your list, I'm sorry.
But one thing I did add to this as well is the, um, I added a, after discussions with Mike, a section about anticipated crowding effects on county roadways, and all already classified as major collector on the U dot functional class, and I want to make sure that's okay, or if you want me to strike that.
Where yet in the document?
It is
Page five.
Point one, six point six, I got page five.
Numbers, number two, great. Number two and three.
And then I also added a U dot section because if U dot requires, uh, they require a U dot comment, uh, that's
So so, uh, Chrissy, so the major collector thing kind of takes the place of the streets that were named previously, Mill Creek and
Yeah, I thought major collector seemed like the more
Right, no, that is
Yeah, a better way to to to, because there was some county concern, it sounded like community concern
Yeah.
About some of, you know, just removing that completely.
Yep.
So to ease that sort of burden
And those streets previously named are major collectors.
Right.
Yeah. And then this would also include any other major collector.
Right.
I agree with that, Mike.
And if it had to go through U dot, I mean, that's completely, I mean, above our heads anyway, so.
Yeah.
You guys are okay with that part?
I'm gonna leave that. And then I think the other big thing was just designating, um, sorry, uh, a special events coordinator, is that right? To to for the county commission, designate someone to that.
Tiny bit of background so the public knows just as much as we know. Uh, in those meetings of special events advisory commission, a lot of people with a lot of big schedules were in a room and literally sat, is it more than fifty vehicles? It's high impact. Is it more, less than fifty vehicles? It's low impact. That was the decision made. There wasn't discussion on events. It was
I'm
People wasting time, and I'll call
We agree with this. We're good.
So we don't need to talk about it.
Where's that one in the document?
Oh, sorry, um, page, it's eight point one, six point zero five zero. Um, eight, what page is that?
Page four.
Four, yeah. Yeah.
And and the individual currently, uh, selected for that is both Jenny Beth and Holly Shalhoub.
That's great.
Yeah, and didn't Jenny Beth get a class step up in this last part because of this position as well? So, okay.
So so it'll be both or either or?
I think it was listed as both, I'm looking to Mark or Quinn or Dave.
I think it's a divide and conquer situation because there is
Whichever one.
Special event coordinator, who is our special event coordinator?
Mark.
It's gonna be, it's generally
Deer in headlights.
So once Kate left, then Alicia started taking it over, and Alicia will then kind of share it with Jenny Beth. So Jenny Beth will be the first point of contact, Alicia will be back up if Jenny Beth's out of town or gets overwhelmed with the stuff. I will note, and I I wanted to bring this up earlier and I forgot, the the intent to applies are supposed to be on this meeting, so we'll have to do them at the next meeting. And hopefully this conversation can inform those intent to applies.
Is that Q three?
Whatever quarter we're up for. Is it quarter four or quarter three?
I can't recall.
We're changing some of those.
Yeah, because it's six months early, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of a team effort between Jenny Beth and Alicia.
Yeah, so it's kind of a team effort between Jenny Beth and Alicia.
What else do we have to tackle out of the five?
Um, so I think you guys have covered, uh, there is, there is some items that were pulled out of the definition of low impact. Uh, but I think some of them have been uh, replaced with other ones. I'm just noting through the commission that there is already reviewed by EMS, Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department. And so when people, I know there was a lot of uh, pu- public concern about no impact beyond normal operations. The entities uh, retained those items to check through.
So I guess the timing would be the next one, is that right?
Correct, timing is your next one after that. And that should be on table.
Well, the first one is eight point one, six oh nine oh, not page seven.
Yeah.
Which one is it again, say that?
Eight seven.
Yeah, eight point one, six point oh nine oh.
And. It used to be ten days, we switched it to five business days. Um, and then ten business days, then have to issue a determination. These numbers are really important, because if someone, if it was just five days and we didn't respond, that would be an automatic deny. Because that's the way it works. Uh, so with that, giving people who are, handling this, a few more days will prevent just denying events that we don't want denied. Uh, uh, additionally, within this, there is a section that allows um, someone to expedite this process, through the special event coordinator. So if there is, is an application that, you know, and they need to be expedited, there is that option. So keep that in mind when we're going through these as well.
Eh, expedite faster than five business days?
Yeah, well, if they, if they reach out to coordinator and they say, hey, I mean, and it's approved, then that is an option as well. So five days and the ten days are sort of, in the bare minimum, that I think that we can ask someone who has a full-time job to, to sort of take on.
The other benefit of these applications, once they've applied once before, a lot of their information's already in the E P O system. And we hope that that the follow-up surveys that need to be done by entity partners that identify whether there were issues with the event. If those are in there, then they'll be flagged for the person that's reviewing them. And the goal would be is the special event coordinator flags those items and has a discussion. But yeah, it is reducing it by each five days. Section A, it's five days less, and B, it's five days less. So it's, five business days within the receipt and then ten business days to complete.
That should be easier, because now there's no committee, correct?
Right, it doesn't have to schedule in conflict, which was noticed before.
Are you guys good with that?
I've I've no problem with that, as long as it doesn't put undue burden on on staff.
Deadlines will be uh.
So you're at eight point one, six point one two oh, is that right? Yeah. Page eleven.
So we have sixty days, fifty days, or forty days prior to. Um.
And then this would, so there's number of day, what it, what is it now? Is it sixty now? It's sixty, right, right. And then that's, and then the high impact ones after that determination, then they come to the commission.
Yeah, the high impact ones was was remaining the same, just for the.
No, just, right, right, okay.
I guess it's like, so so with those, they have to get all of the sign-offs from all the, right, road department, sheriff, I I mean.
Well, yeah, so this is the intent to apply uh.
Oh, so that's just the idea. Okay, yeah, never mind, I'm sorry, my bad. Yeah, you have an opinion?
What's the, yeah, what's the benefit? What's the benefit of sixty days rather than five days? I mean, it's just the intent to apply. It doesn't seem like it's.
Going back and forth with the applicant, um, and then allowing them time to respond. Um, so if you, you know, if your I T A isn't complete when you initially send it in, a lot of those, those days are, uh, beaten up by just back and forth, like you didn't send me this, you didn't send me this, you didn't send me this, because people send in an application thinking that they're, you know, but but they're missing half of it. And so a lot of it is just back. Um, if we don't have, you know, everything within, you know, those forty days. Um, a lot of it is just, making sure that the applicant has enough time to put on an event that, that is going to have five hundred people at it. Um.
What is the, do you know what the typical time is or the turnaround time? Like, this might be more for Quinn um, for an application. From the time someone says, I I would like to apply to actually having their application in. Um, and I might even defer to Angie on some of this, but typically it depends on the event and the nature of the holder. And if it's, you know, if it's a first time, if it's a young event, they haven't done this very much, they're not used to it, it can take a long time to gather all that stuff together. And it can be a lot of back and forth with staff. If it's someone who's been doing a running event for the last eight or nine years, or like Jeep Safari, it was pretty helpful on all their stuff too. So just, it kinda depends. And and it very.
Start, let's start with low impact. Go ahead.
Just, just one, one thought on this one. This, one of the issues that came up and that Mike may remember is that there was a vacancy at O S T A, that an opportunity fell through. Um, and there are some like traveling fair, traveling rodeo, circus, that's what it was, circus. If you have that, I mean, if it's a bomb and pop operation that they wanted to do the international basket weaving competition here, they probably are gonna be ready sixty days prior. But if it's a circus or something that's already ready to go and and traveling through, I think you could do a a shorter window. Problem is, we can't, we don't wanna make fifteen different exceptions. So I I could see a midpoint being forty-five days. I think thirty, thirty's pretty quick before an event. I think you're probably gonna need to be pretty, pretty put together if you're gonna have that. But there are the outliers like the circus that they do this all the time and that's how they operate. So I think most, yeah, like I said, most operations, you you'd want to at least, want to have at least sixty days to be able to make sure the event's profitable. Seems like. A quick question touching on that. Uh, wouldn't a circus be fully contained within those? Correct, that was, that was another, yeah, that caveat. Uh, I I do understand the a analogy there. Um. I lost it. One, two seconds, I'll get back. Soft softball tournaments, or I I don't know. Softball tournaments and. They were partially out in the county and then partially in town. Particularly, if you had an event like that, that's relatively, easier to put together and maybe you don't need a whole two months when you're in the middle of summer softball, I don't know.
Yeah, on this particular item, I think that give, you know, they need to be organized. You don't want just somebody throwing something together in uh, forty days. You know, if you're gonna have an event, you are gonna be planning it out there some. So these numbers I don't think matter as as much to be lenient on. Um, maybe fifty days uh, for their intent to apply, that gives them, you know, six, five and a half weeks that it's coming up. You know, you gotta plan for it, you gotta advertise for it. So, I think that leaving those larger is better, so they'll be more organized. And also, they need to have the time to work through all of those different, you know, the sheriff needs to get back. EMS needs to get back. You know, we don't want them to be halfway through getting there and then not get the information and then it just gets canceled either. So I think giving that ample time.
Trish is next.
I'm good with, I'm good with fifty, I'm good with cutting different.
Uh. I don't see a flaw either direction on that. Uh, with that, also, uh, in intent applies, we need to either promote, we need to put it front page. When you want to hold a special event, you go through the approval process. Uh, it will clean up a lot of the I T As. Because there are prerequisites to actually moving forward on deapproval, uh, that you have a a lot of the boxes filled out, or a lot of the lines. So we need, we need to let people know that we are using the approval system and that will automatically clean up a lot of the I T As also. Uh, both in time and, I mean, necessity of information. So looking at the table on the, on the bottom of page twelve, top of page thirteen, that would be fifty days prior to the event. Be the I T A submission deadline. How about the second number, previously thirty, edited to fifteen?
Fifteen doesn't actually work. Um, Mike and I worked that through. Twenty days, twenty-two days is the bare minimum to allow um, partner agencies of five days that they have asked for, to look at these. Uh, so with that, with the other numbers, twenty-two is the bare minimum.
Yep.
Uh, I don't love that thirty, it seems to be the most appropriate, but twenty-two is.
And we're labeling everything business days on.
Not on this.
Oh, not on that one, okay.
Wouldn't it be nice, if if twenty-two's the bare minimum, just have a little bit of breathing room?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like, to me, it seems like thirty's kind of a no-brainer. That's, that's, that's still pretty quick. It's a fast turnaround and it gives them a little bit of, you know, if there's a snag or anything, it gives them a little bit of space to move.
Yeah.
So thirty would keep it the exact same.
Just.
Okay. And I understand the need for those timelines to.
Then I got lost. Did we decide on fifty or forty-five?
Did we get through everything?
I don't have any other, any changes that are redlined. Speaking back to the point of we, needed clarified and defined and put out, that goes to Mark, that goes to Stephen's office. Uh, events held at O S T A, events held at the airport, events held at Grand Center, I mean, Grand County facilities, are wholly obtained, wholly contained and not underneath the special events uh, necessity.
Yeah, they fit in the, they fit in the definition of exemption.
And one of those very specific exemptions, uh, I'll go back to Angie, I know she's listening, um, had a little cross problem with getting, high school, something happened to high school, uh, softball field. Softball, we wanted to use, O S T A grounds, and there was a couple snafus. We need to designate some. Uh, it was open O S T A fields and we were trying to get softball out there. We need to ease up getting them out there. They can use that field to practice, why could they not? Uh, is my insurance. I, we need to clarify uh, some insurance points. Between the school board and us, it's the same trust, is it not?
So why?
Why would we wanna make, we just wanna make sure that we're not the one with the back. Okay. Or or make sure that we have sufficient coverage for it, then we'll cover it and might adjust the insurance premiums. And I definitely trust Angie to make that decision with, through your office, understandably. Sure, it'll be a you guys' decision. On some, on some. But then we don't need, we uh, uh, then don't need, well, that softball needs that that night. So if the high school softball team needed it that night. No, no, no. What I'm saying is you guys, you guys probably wanna establish a policy. You will, we we wanna contact the trust to see if they'll cover it. That will increase the premium you guys would, clear that if that's something they're willing to cover. It's the same, why aren't they not?
It's complicated.
Well, I think we need to look into it without a doubt, but I, I'm to Mike's point. We need to get the insurance and the policy out of the way, so that it isn't a commission decision on whether somebody wants to take the high school team, or whatever it is, out to the ball fields at O S T A. If if we need to give Stephen some direction on that, then I say we do and we move forward with it.
Yeah, they're beautiful, they're beautiful ball fields. I'd love to see more use out there. I mean, generally, I'd just like to see, see those ball fields.
Yeah, they are getting used more than they used to.
Yeah, still, I'd love to see them used more.
The airport also.
Would.
Angie's right.
Oh, sorry, Angie.
Go ahead, Angie.
Can I comment on that? So what we needed to decide is, I've talked to the trust on that, and what we needed to decide, um, you as a commission on is what you want to be, um, how much liability you wanna take. Cause we, we are obviously covered and have insurance, um, because we are a recreation facility. But how much of that liability do you wanna take on? That's what the question is.
Right. That's, and we can discuss that at another, another venue as well.
Yeah, uh, there is one thing that I would like to add, um, as far as the special event portion. Um, the thing that I have, that I run into a lot with the special event ordinance, um, and the events, is the vendor list. Um, currently, the way it's written is the vendor list needs to be submitted three days prior to the event date. Um, that is a huge problem for event holders, just because the vendor list, is constantly changing and sometimes it changes the day of the event. Um, vendors can't come, they change. Um, but then somebody else could come. Um, so if there's a way we could look at it to where the vendor list could be submitted after the event, that would be helpful and more ideal.
We, we can look into that one, but it, the difficulty that we're gonna run into is gonna be insurance and other obligations behind it. So we, we definitely can't do it after the fact. Um, but we'll, we'll be willing to look at that issue as well.
It'd be nice to look into.
Those are, those are outside this talking point. So I, I feel like I hit my points on this and we came to an agreement. Pretty good. I mean, that's the, there's a little bit of wording in there that still says, says special events advisory committee. I, I just couldn't control F in the document. Uh, but take a look at that. Uh, that was my last thing.
Uh, one thing I just wanted to point out is that the appeal process with these quicker timelines, um, people are going to be able to appeal as a. They still will be able to appeal for like the next year or something, but they wouldn't be able to appeal.
Okay.
Uh, before on these.
So denial is essentially done.
There's just not, there, there's not really a path, a path for appeal, because we go through Title I, which is the A L J process, on these really quick, I T As, these low end. Um, they still have the ability to appeal it, they could have it later, it just won't be for the date that they wanted. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out to the.
Yeah, but I, I don't think it'll.
Anything further? Anybody?
No, I just appreciate, I think this was a great exercise and and compromise and coming to the table together. So thank all of you guys.
I appreciate everybody working together, honored, clearly. And Mike, I know you were passionate about this and, thank that everybody was able to, especially, I appreciate you guys being able to help them with that, to make sure that we're, doing this per our county attorney's advice and on we can go. So with that note, I would say then that we recess until four o'clock. Do we need a motion for that?
Thank you. No, I think you're fine. I think, Bill, I think what you do is just, you, this is a special workshop, so you close the workshop and then, and then uh, say that we'll uh, open our regular commission meeting at four.
Okay, and Mike, did you have something?
This is expected to be an action item next meeting.
Right, okay, so then I will close the special workshop and we will come back and open the regular meeting at four o'clock.
Chair, can I just have one note? The reason why we're, we're required to do that is we do the workshop and pursuant to our bylaws. Whenever we have a workshop, we don't find, but it vote on that item the same day.
Correct.
And that gives staff and everybody time to be able to make edits and changes necessary. And it gives the commission time to look at a new revised document.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification for both myself and the public.
Thanks, Barry.
Okay, I will call this grand.
Remind me of recess.
Checking.
Okay, I will call the Grand County Commission to order now. It's four o'clock and we can all stand for the pledge of leeches. Hey, and so we will. I don't know why, but it doesn't feel like my mic is working. Maybe it's just fine and it's me, but we'll we'll open this up to citizens to be heard at our four o'clock session here. If we've got anybody in the room that would like to come forward. Mr. Lindberg, please do.
Hello. Name's Aaron Lindberg. Uh, for the record. Um. I appreciate you guys' response to my things over the ADO and HDHO. Um, it's interesting right now that the uh. The state is looking at their own kind of HDHO and uh I think. You know, as we look at our housing goals, we um. I see that. Uh. There's certain income brackets that we want to target and I feel like that HDHO uh income bracket that that targets is a very critical. Uh, part of our economy and allows people with their gateways uh getting a foothold into the housing here. Uh, I know it's had some controversial issues, problems, but the planning director did ask us that we review that and the ADO. As a part of our larger um. Uh, thing to revise the whole land use code. And that's what the other uh thing I would like to talk about is the uh revision of the land use code. I actually ended up reading the economic development plan. And their Trail to Tomorrow. Um. I was feeling that those two. Uh, you know, economic development, I feel it's in land use, I feel are so intertwined. That those things should be really looked at uh congruently. Um, for example, I just believe that we need, you know, our our future land use code has uh variations of. Um. Like commercial zoning and then economic development has ideas on like how we should set these. Uh, what kind of businesses we want and whatnot. So I think central planning uh is kind of like. I I wrote down here, I had a good quote. It was like the riddle of the twentieth century. But for Grand County or riddle of the twenty first century is for how it's kind of how to grow its taxable economy appropriately. Um, I think those two should be really, uh, I would like to, I'm going to make myself more involved in the economic development plan. Because I think that those things are 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 important to line up.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Please come forward.
My name is Pete Gross. Um, I trust you all had a chance to read my email. I thought of one more thing that I didn't include is in the special events. Um. You put a limit, um, that's the limit that would trigger. The need to, uh, you know, how special, I mean, to go through a hearing process and not just automatically approve. To have a maximum horsepower of about ten thousand horsepower. That would mean that would be the equivalent of like about fourteen semi trucks. Which I think if we had an event with fourteen semi trucks cruising around town through residential streets and stuff. But that might be something that we should at least look at and not just be automatically approved. So anyway, just a thought to strengthen the special events ordinance. Is maybe have a a ceiling on how much horsepower before you have to take serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, please step forward and I didn't state it earlier, but we try to keep to three minutes and we also would appreciate it if you'd introduce yourself.
My name is Zach Cooley and I was just remembering how it was almost exactly a year ago. That this chamber was filled and the hallway was filled and the foyer was filled. And uh for that meeting, uh, one of the partners at the Kent Creek Development spoke in via Zoom. And he said. We share a deep commitment to Grand County and its people. We are here to work together with you. With the community and to address your concerns. So. Seems appropriate now, I think, to ask ourselves the question. How have the developers shown that commitment to the county and its people? And from where I'm standing, sitting, if actions speak louder than words, they have done absolutely nothing. Um. Now let's make sure I'm on the right track here with my thoughts. Um. How many people in the community have poured out their hearts on this and expressed the harm that their project is causing the community? And then later last year, another one of the partners, Trent Arnold, he was asked for an article. You know, what's your response to the strong community reaction? And he said, we're in our legal rights and we're well capitalized. The developers really love to talk about money, but I haven't once heard them talk about what is right for Moab. And I don't think that Tom, Trent, Craig have had that conversation amongst themselves. And that's understandable because I don't think any one of them wants to be the one to instigate, right? Bring it up and say, hey, guys, maybe we should have a meeting about if what we're doing in Moab is right for the community. Because Moab has spoken loud and clear. It's not wanted. It's not needed. Here's a long list of ways in which it is harming the community. So what, how should we respond to this? Should we maybe change our plans? Or should we just ignore the community and keep on with our current plan? Well, maybe profits over people isn't really the way to go. Maybe, you know, destroying an area that's cherished by the locals is not the best way to invest our money. Like, right? If they if they had that conversation, I think this would have been long gone at least a year ago. And so. Um. I do want to say I'm grateful to all of you guys and the commission and what you do. What a tough job in juggling everything. You have the legal stuff, the policy, the community feedback. And all of that and. The bureaucracy here does great in providing order. But that order sometimes comes at the expense of other things. And I think that what is right is one of the things that sometimes gets left behind. So. I get the importance, like obviously that's what you guys do, right? It's all about. Um. You know, the zoning and the property rights and all that. But I hope that in whatever our roles are, we can just take a moment to step aside. From all of that and talk about what's right and we can encourage the developers to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the timer.
That's the timer, sorry.
Um, anybody else? Like to come forward? Do we have anybody online? Okay. But is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak at this time? Citizens be heard. Okay, I will close citizens to be heard and we will move on and it looks like we're. Clear of presentations, department reports and agency reports at this time and we will move on then to commission member disclosures and I'll ask if there's any. Disclosures we need to make, commissioners, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, my wife works for the sheriff's department.
Okay, anybody else? Nothing? Okay. So with that said, we'll move on to elected officials. Chris, you would like to start us off?
Sure, sure. I will try to go quickly. Uh, there's been a lot going on. Um, I went on the thirteenth to our southeastern Utah Watership Council. Um, Cand- Candace Hossenager, did I say that correctly? Um, came from the Colorado River Authority. There was a lot of great discussions and great input and. I'll tell you when that board cut got put together, this is my opinion, I got only on another meeting, but I think it's. One of the more productive councils that has come together in a very short time and um I see a lot of value in it. And 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 Mike and Brian or sorry, sorry, Bill and Brian both um went to that. We had a planning commission meeting on the thirteenth also. Um. And that we had some very solid applicants to fill a commission position and that will be on the agenda tonight. Um. I had a conservation district meeting and that was actually the local working group. So both Grand and San Juan County came together to talk about. Resource concerns and accomplishments. We had a CJC meeting on the fourteenth. The stats from two thousand and twenty four, there were eighty four children served. Predominate predominantly between the ages of eleven to seventeen. The bulk of those cases, sexual and physical abuse and the bulk of the offenders were parents. So it's always discouraging. I think Andrea does a great job, but. Really discouraging to see those kind of statistics. I went to the cemetery board meeting, which was very, very cool. Um, it's a great little board. And and, you know, I learned some some new things, so I took that over for Evan. We had a mop meeting on the fifteenth. Um, a couple of things that were that came up where the BLM is looking, working with the nature conservancy on restoration projects and stream degradation. The USGS wetland study, they just kind of reiterated that there are some, you know, concerns about threatened water sources, specifically out of Skakel Springs. There's also a shallow brine layer we know out there and concerns about the movement of that of that brine layer. We know that overall in the last few decades, we've seen less surface water in the preserve, less vegetation cover. And they're just going to continue that monitoring with the um, we had an E. coli study and we know that Castle Creek, Mill Creek and Pack Creek. All have issues with E. coli in the lower system. So the higher system, farther in the mountains, there's not E. coli issues. But lower on there are and um I'll actually and I'll I'll kind of send out an email. I might have him come and present that. It was a very quick presentation and I think it's of interest. I had a library board meeting. Um, there is a new teen center that is now where the old hostel was. So that was kind of cool. She moved that over. I think it's great because it's right next to the library. Actually went up to Vernal for a division of wildlife bison management plans. That was kind of cool, specifically about the bison in the book cliffs. Sorry that I'm going on and on and on. And then just this morning, I I was just telling Mike, I met out um at Osta with Ben Bird and Greg. To talk, we are kind of the archery range is moving. It's moving very slowly because I'm trying to get free labor and fuel and all this. And fuel and all those things. So done with um, all of the, the groundwork, CB earthworks donated, uh, equipment, time, fuel. And then now Ben Bird is coming in to help with possible fencing. We're kind of maybe going to reuse fencing that was taken down high school. Um, and so we're moving. It's slow. It's part-time gig for me, but we're moving. So that's it. Sorry about that. There's a lot.
It's all good. Jock? Thanks, Bill. I attended a, first of all, I went to the, uh, I just went and say, say goodbye to the, uh, board at the chamber on Wednesday morning to make sure Mike or Mike, Brian showed up on time, which he did. Eight thirty, bright and early. Nice work, Brian. Um, that day I also attended the historic preservation, uh, commission. Uh, most of the board meetings I attended, we voted as, as is the normal thing on the first meeting of January, voted for the new officers for that. Board and Jody Patterson was re-elected chair, Tara Barish vice chair and our own Alicia Oliver as secretary of the board. Um, we also discussed that the board is still working on, uh, working with, with BLM and others, um, in creating a national historic district for the portal in Kane Creek area. Uh, petroglyph panels, um, and that may be coming before us, uh, sometime in February or March, hopefully. Uh, but that's moving forward slowly but surely. Um, and then there was also, uh, continued discussion about Dewey Bridge restoration. Um, and potential, uh, grant opportunities for fundraising. There and there's some question, uh, though we could talk about this later, but um, as to whether, uh, maybe a CIV, uh, grant could be, um, used for, for. Working on that and I, I have no idea, but that's, that's a conversation for another time. Um, and let's see, the same day went out to Thompson and attended a TSSD meeting. Um, uh, Chair Corkery was unable to attend and it was actually the shortest Thompson meeting that I've ever attended at under an hour. You know, Thompson, that's, that's pretty quick, but, but we did discuss, uh, as per their bylaws, there had been, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding, a, a. A different chair had been elected in December and then looking at the bylaws, um, that, uh, it, it was determined that that vote actually doesn't take place until. February, so, um, so we did not move forward with the new chair on that one. Um, it looks like from the, uh, CIB grant that they received last year for the new SCADA metering, the digital metering systems. Um, all the parts have now been acquired and, uh, it's just a matter of the water manager installing them. So that should happen very soon. And once that happens. Uh, Thompson will have a much clearer idea of exactly how much water is coming out of that spring and, and, um, how much, how much water they actually have. So that'll be a huge step forward for Thompson. Um, I also, uh, the next day I attended a Trail Mix meeting, again, officer elections. Uh, Brendan Cameron was elected as the chair, so a new chair at Trail Mix. Brendan's great. Um, and then, uh, the other thing we came out of that meeting is, is we, for the last couple of years, we've had maintenance Mondays, which is a volunteer opportunity to work on trails in the area. Uh, predetermined at the, at the meeting before and we decided to move those to Wednesdays. So instead of maintenance Mondays, we'll have trail work Wednesdays and that'll commence. First Wednesday in February, working on the Prospector Trail and, uh, and we'll keep working at that. Um, I also attended along with, uh, Bill and Brian, a, uh, county, uh, structure subcommittee meeting. It's nice to get the ball rolling with that. Um, and, uh, then I also attended the non-motorized trail master plan. Committee meeting. It was an initial meeting to discuss the scope of the project. Uh, we went over the plan and deliverables. We talked about, um, we need to hire a consultant with that. Um, there's a lot of city and county collaboration on that, which is awesome and, um. So we will look at, at, uh, which, which contractors. There, there'll be a, uh, RFP put out for contractors and then we'll, uh, have a committee that decides which contractors to go with and, and. Just getting the ball rolling with that committee and, and I'm looking forward to that, that process. It'll probably be about a year process and that's the entirety of, uh, my couple of weeks. Thank you.
Mike? I'm actually missing the host of meeting here within one hour due to a sketch and a little effect of our meeting. Uh, I did attend a, a housing authority, uh, southeastern Utah, uh, meeting, I. All of us know, uh, there were some issues with a cinema court resident, uh, and the Hsu, uh, commission. We will, uh, the issue, the issue was actually dealt with, uh, there, but one of the things that did come up, uh, that Hsu took. Uh, to heart was, uh, onsite property management. Uh, onsite property management, uh, is an onsite property management staff member. Uh, to more expedite, uh, complaints and or needs, uh, has already been posted through Hsu. So, uh, John creation there. Um, went over their financials, uh, anything in their November financials. Everything looked, uh, from as far as I could see. Uh, they're doing okay, but in, uh, in having. Uh, their funds, they are looking for, uh, projects to be moving on going into next year to provide more inspiration. So.
Thank you.
Okay, today I went to USU Advisory Board Council meeting and we're pleased to announce at long last, they've hired a small business development director. And it's Todd Thompson, which I think we're familiar with. He, we were impressed with him when he applied for, uh, the job that Mark got. Uh, they, uh, have an ESL course will be run from the end of, of. March for eight weeks for beginners and intermediate English speakers and the cost is only. Twenty-five dollars. So it's really worthwhile. They're going to get the information to the schools and. And on posters and if anyone knows or, you know, has contact with some people that would benefit from. That program, please let them know. They built a canopy in the welding area and they use the same architecture, MHTM that built the building itself. So it's very aesthetic. It looks good. It doesn't look like it was just an add-on, which is nice. And it's been a big help to the students and the staff. To get them out from under the sun and out from the weather and to be able to do the stuff outside. So that was a big improvement. Uh, they're hoping to have four incentive scholarship for local students this year, which would be great, which I, I'm very excited about. Another exciting thing that happened, is happening, we only have four me, very few meetings, so there's a lot. The Hortus Coast Cheerless is developing a cactus garden on the campus. And on, with that will come a pamphlet and a website for people to come up, look at the. Garden and then say, and then get a pamphlet to say, oh, this would work well in my yard, this won't. And then there will be a website and, and someone to contact. So if people are looking at. Trying to get rid of some of their lawn or just want to improve the appearance of theirs, I think this will be a very good benefit to us. They're working with closely with Grand County School System to educate students on opportunities USV Moab has to offer. Uh, on April fourth will be the graduation at Element. And, uh, we were, he was very excited to say that the new president of, uh, USU has said we can pursue. Developing housing on the property and the previous, uh, president had refused that. So they're very, very excited. Uh, it does come with some pretty intense restrictions as far as how they can go forward. They can't go to the legislation legislators and ask for money and they can't borrow the money. So it's going to be a tough lift, but I think the excitement is there and I think they're going to, we're going to have a meeting in February to look at different options. So that was good. On the eighth, I had a solid waste special board meeting and we voted to have AJ, I hope I don't destroy this last name, Thorgmattan. Does it? What? Thorgmore, I did! I just desecrated, didn't I? I'm known for that. Anyway, uh, I'm really excited that he's on board. I have for two reasons. One, that gives us a full staff. A full board. And second, he's really good. In his application, he's very good at, uh, IT and that's, uh. Having somebody to help with the IT will be very beneficial. In fact, although we will be voting on it next. Meeting, uh, they're already talking to him and, and, and getting information from him to help move forward with some of the stuff they're doing. Uh, the other really exciting thing is we were rewarded a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. For a Moab food waste minimization and pilot compost project. There will be an in-vessel, one of those. Compost in vessels, so this, you know, and they're looking at locations, but most likely it'll be at the transfer station because they already have the smell issue. And, uh, I think it was a really neat collaboration. One of those times you've seen collaborations work well. Because it was collaboration between solid waste, USU, City of Moab. And the Moab Sustainable Organization. I might not have that name right. And it looks like they will be start working on it as soon as March first, which is really good news. The other exciting news is they've applied for a four point eight million dollar grant. Federal grant. And what it will be, it will be for sorting a better sorting, uh, uh. You know, recyclables that come in, uh, you know, in the single stream and such that will. It won't quite be a murf, if you know, and, and, but it will be close to and it will really improve the quality and the amount of, of recyclables we. Have that don't get become, become contaminated. So that's really good news. It also will include. Uh, the, a, a improvement to the storing and collecting of household toxic waste. Which would be a very, you know, we are doing it, they have a process, but this will help us make, bring it to the next level. And hopefully if we get it, we will know in six months. And if you've noticed, they're leasing a new solid waste, uh, hauling truck. If you've seen that around town, it's really exciting. It can. Go almost twice as many. Pick up twice as much as what the others are. So it's really improving. It's allowing us to take some of the really old vehicles. That are on their last leg and let them kind of get worked on and still get everything picked up. We had, uh, the homeless coordinating meeting. There is going to be, uh, the Moore Free Health Clinic is having, uh, an eye screening. If you want, give them a call and you can have that, uh, that's going to be happening in. To, uh, January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And their women health service will be ramped up. Uh. They're working on, uh. Uh, working on the medication storage for our homeless individuals in the community. So that's a big program that they're working on right now and we will be doing the count here in a couple of weeks where we will have. One or two nights that everybody runs around, attempts to find out how many homeless are in town. So if you know. Of anyone that is couch surfing, does not have a home or is living in an inappropriate place. Uh, please let Rihanna know at the, uh, multicultural center so that they can get them because it's really. And I think an ineffective method that the state uses to determine how many homeless is people are. Because there are a lot of, they're not easy to find. And so if we, anyone can help with that, that would be great. And they have a section eight one, uh, housing for persons with disability. Is on and which is exciting that we've, uh, qualified for. And it will be opening in three weeks. So, oh, and then I probably forgot some things. We had some of our short meetings. I met with the EMS. Uh, we had a short meeting to discuss, uh, when to go for the healthcare tax and. It looks like it would be better to go for it next year because, uh, in two thousand and twenty-six, we have to do it anyway. The legislators say we have to go back to the voters anyway. So it won't be this year like I was hoping, but it will be next year. Uh, and we had a meeting to talk about, uh, uh, economic opportunity and, uh. Economic, uh, the travel council and I can't, I think I had one more, but I can't remember what it was. Uh, future consideration. What I would like for next meeting is I think we should change the name of the economic. Opportunity Development Department. It no longer fits what it's doing. It did for that short period of time when we had money to use for economic, uh, opportunity and diverse diversification, but we don't have that now. So the only person working on the economic opportunity in the office is Ben Alter and all he's doing is block grants and everybody else is working on. On tourism and tourism promotion. The department right now is working on becoming a DMO. Which I didn't know what that was. It's a designation marketing organization. Yeah, so I think this is a good opportunity, a timely time for us to think about. What would be a, a name? Do we want to go back to the old name or do we want to make it Grand County? Travel Council or Travel Organization or Department? Do, I think between now and then, if everybody would come up with ideas. And submit them and then next week we can either discuss them or, or vote on it, but I think it's time to make the name. Fit better with what the department does. So that's a future consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, and I know we're discussing that already, Mary, in one of the subcommittees. So I think we'll just probably move along with that in the structure subcommittee, but we can certainly discuss it and take some input from everybody. So Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. It's been busy couple of weeks. Let's see here, January eighth, um, I went to the chamber meeting. Jock introduced me in. Let's see what happened there is they, uh, elected a new executive committee. Um, there's also four board seats that are open. The ballots will be out on the twenty-first. Um, so this is your chance to, um, you know. Provide some input on who's on that chamber board. Um, the luncheons, uh, they had a luncheon today. Lena Pace was there and, and, uh, we discussed, you know, March's reservation system. Um, there's also going to be a luncheon on the eighteenth of February and the eighteenth of March for people that want to go. See, on the tenth, I went to a, uh, USAC meeting. Um, one of the things there that was really interesting is the, uh, Utah Department of Public Safety is going to be. Starting a new fentanyl task force, right? And it seems like they have some pretty good goals. One of them is going to be mitigating gaps in funding. Um, and then trying to centralize the, uh, the data flow that they're getting. So that, that seemed like it was, it was, it was pretty interesting. The, uh, one of the notes from that. Per capita, right? Um, rural and urban overdoses is equal. So that's, that's, that's something that's pretty impressive. Um, on the thirteenth, I went to the southeastern watershed as well with, um, both Trish and with Bill. Um, that was really interesting. Candace Hasinger gave a, a great report on both the upper and lower basin and some of the, um. Concerns with Colorado River and the two thousand and twenty-six negotiations and guidelines, um, that's going to be coming up. One of the things I really. Had never thought about before is, you know, the lower basins, right? Um, they've agreed to take a one point five million reduction. Um, but the upper basin is kind of thinking, well, we're already taking that reduction basically out of evaporation. So that's kind of where they're, they're at in those negotiations. It was, it was pretty interesting. Um, also out of that, we found out that, uh, Cash Stillings is replacing Mark Stillson as the regional engineer. And then Mark Stillson has been, uh, selected for the principal engineer, um, of the Colorado River of Utah, which is, is pretty impressive.
What, what was his name? Cash?
Cash Stillings. Cash Stallings, I'm sorry. Yep. Can't even read my own typing. Um, also the, uh, Colorado, the, um, those guidelines, the EIS should be out by the spring of December of two thousand and twenty-six. Um, so I'm sorry, but by this spring and it'll be due by December of two thousand and twenty-six. Um, let's see here. I also, that same day, uh, um, went to a meeting, um, at Guissa with Arnie Holquest over wat- water quality data meeting, metering. Um, and it was concerning, you know, the, uh, administration of the National Groundwater Monitoring Grant currently.
Nag woman.
Nag woman, yeah, 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 yeah. She gave me, I was like, what is this? It took me like five minutes to like actually get it down, but I think I got it right, right there. Um. You had the, uh, so currently Grand County is administering that grant right now and Arnie felt that it would be better actually if Guissa, um, administered the grant. Um, however, when you actually, uh, when they went and looked at it, neither Grand County nor Guissa actually had the data to do that. And so now it's going to have to be done through. That's in another note right there. It's going to be done through USGS. Um, it's, it's, he was going to have to end up monitoring that grant right there. Let's see here, on the fourteenth, I went to a UAC Policy Steering Committee. Um, there's a couple of interesting bills out there. One of them is HB thirty-seven. Um, and that's talking about, uh, affordable housing and about a density overlay. So it'll be really neat to follow that one and see where that kind of goes. Um, on that day as well, I attended the Economic Development and Travel Council Subcommittee with both Mary and. Um, on that day as well, I attended the Economic Development and Travel Council Subcommittee with both Mary and Melody. And that was really good. We were able to kind of set the goals of what the committee was going to start looking at. And, uh, and we decided, I think, that we're going to start with the budget review. Um, go through the goals and the roles of both, uh, the departments and then figure out a way to measure the success. Uh, we're going to meet again on the twenty seventh, um, for that right there. Um, I also met that day on the, um. With the, um, for the subcommittee with the organizational structure, um, with both Bill and with Jock on that day. Um, and then we kind of came up with that, that we're going to be looking at the organizational restructure possibility, abilities of a public works department. And possibly moving back to a community development departments. Um, another thing that we also discussed was the option of a financial controller. Um, or possibly a performance auditor slash purchasing agent that we could look at that might be underneath the, um, uh, administration. Um, also that day, I went to the TCAB meeting. Um, at that meeting, they gave a big thanks to Mary. We weren't exactly sure if it's been a decade or not, but, uh, but she's been on there for, for pretty close to ten years. So everybody just wanted.
A lot of changes.
To send a, a nice big farewell, um, to Mary on that. It was, it was pretty fun. Um, Ben Frederigal, um, went to the Go West and met with, uh, some of our FIT, that's foreign independent travel receptives. And wants to start getting some itineraries, uh, set out to get pushed out. Um, we had great interviews. Um, we'll be, that's on the agenda tonight. We can go over that. Um, Ally Hartford presented, uh, uh, on the social media campaigns and shared some of her processes and her goals. Um, and I got to say that there's, well, her and Nick Salata updated us on the new Discover Moab website. Um, that project is on time and it's set to launch June tenth. Yeah, both of those updates, you know, they made a lot of excitement. So it was, it was a pretty positive kind of, uh, mood inside of that meeting right there. See, on the sixteenth, um, I went to the Motorized Trail Committee. Um, just real quick on that, we had, uh, the Rake and Rides are going to be on January twenty fifth. That's going to be on bends and things. On February twenty second, they're going to be doing some work on cliffhanger. And on March fifteenth, they're going to be doing some work on poison spider. It's a great opportunity to get out there and go check out some of those trails and also get some work done and make sure that. They're beautiful. See, Easter Jeep Safari will have tram, uh, trail ambassadors as, uh, on the freshman and sophomore trail rides. Uh, and then another thing that was really nice is I saw that the trail ambassadors have put out a recovery card. And so basically it's just a little card that says, you know, here are the services you can call when you've got yourself in trouble. And, uh, I know as an outfitter, I get those questions all the time, like, hey, who do I call when I get messed up? And, uh, and it's great to have all of that already, already loaded up for people. Um, that day I went, met with the, uh, at the TAC with Jock as well. And they're going to be updating the non-motorized trail and active transportation, uh, master plan. Um, and that's going to be via grant from UDOT. Um, and right now, like Jock said, they're just kind of doing the discussing of the background and the project scope, kind of getting everything figured out. Um, later that evening was a Guissa meeting and it was all pretty quick. They were just closing out a quarter four, approving budgets. Um, and they're purchasing a backup motor and a rebuild, um, on another backup motor for a couple of their pumps. And then they're going to be replacing some lease trucks with some purchase trucks. Um, on the seventeenth, there was a UAC meeting. Um, and there was some, actually some, some pretty interesting conversations there, um, from San Juan County over Bear's Year's National Monument. Um, one of the things that they're finding out over there is there's a lack of infrastructure. Um, so you know, you have a monument that got placed and they have no infrastructure inside of there. So once again, you're finding out, um, you have a county that's basically picking up the fiscal responsibility of monuments that are basically left on this county. And they're, and they're running into some troubles on that. Um, there's also, uh, there was a record of decision that came out on the Henry Mountains Travel Management Plan. Um, and then in total on that, there's been, uh, two thousand miles of roads closed over the last two years. See, on the twenty.
Henry Mountains?
The Henry Mountain Travel Management.
Wow.
Yep, so that, that got, that got, that came out, I believe. It was on.
You did.
Yeah, the sixteenth to the seventeenth is when that record of decision came out. Um, let's see here, uh, a couple of other quick things, uh, on the twenty third and twenty fourth. Moab Free Health, uh, Clinic and Vision Clinic, um, in partnership with Hope Alliance is going to be doing some vision screenings. So I just want to mention that to people who want to be able to get out and, uh, get your eyes checked out. Um, and then I did have one future consideration, and that is if we could, um, maybe start having, uh, one or two of the departments come in. And just start sharing what their goals are, right? Their SMART goals, you know, what's, what are they planning for this year? And what are they planning for maybe the next three years? Just, just quick discussions so that, you know, myself and I don't know, Melody would find in, uh, value in that. But it would be nice to see where each department is heading, just so I can kind of get my head around some of that things. Thanks.
Okay, so I've been a lot of meetings with everybody else. Um, on Friday, I went to the UAC meeting via Zoom, but, uh, they talked about the fentanyl task force. They talked about TRT update and it's very interesting because every county has their unique needs. So it's an interesting discussion. The, one of the discussions I was really interested in was the school, um. Resource Officer and the Guardian Policy. Many of the people on the call were interested in teachers being trained and able to carry versus a guardian. Um, so that you didn't have a specific person to, to kill and then go after the rest of the school. But so you wouldn't know necessarily who had the, who, who was trained and carrying. So that was a big discussion with that group. Um, Monday, we, Mary and I went up to the EMS shed and we talked about the healthcare tax. Um, the current tax is point, is by a point five percent on non-food items, but that tax ends December of twenty twenty six. So the entities that are sharing that tax right now is the EMS Special District and the. Canyonlands Carers Center, Special District, and they both are needing more money. And so losing that tax would be a big deal and they even want to talk about moving it to the one percent threshold. But Andy did say that there's legislation going on that could affect, one, that the commission could vote to keep that. Or two, that there's just other, there's other tax bills on the table. So we're going to meet again after the legislation's led, led us, ah, session. Um, then Tuesday, January fourteenth, we, um, attended the UAC Community Development Policy Steering Committee. Um, not only did they talk about the density overlay, um, the HB thirty seven, but there's also some other zoning amendments. And the home sales amendments. Then there's one that affects Grand County, that's the HCR one. It's a concurrent resolution regarding the Grand County Water Conservancy District. Um, that was motion to recommend a support. And that, I bet that, um, Bill will talk about that more because he knows more about it. Um, then, uh, I met on Wednesday with Economic Development and Travel Council Subcommittee. Um, Mary graciously let me have that board. It's going to be, it's very interesting. Right now they're working on an actionable economic plan that integrates insights from the Trail to Tomorrow Report. That fosters a balance and prosperous future reflected, um, in the general plan and guiding strategic projects for, for resourcing. By the Rural Grants Program. Then on Friday, I did another UAC. I'm on, I'm signed up for all of the UAC steering policy committees and so I'm learning a lot. I don't necessarily have as much to report on each one of them. Tuesday, this morning, there was two. Um, the Social and Human Services Policy Steering Committee and the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. And then at nine o'clock, went to the EMS Special Service District and we voted on two board members. We had five. Uh, which is super exciting to have that many people that were interested in being on that board. We had a long discussion of the state of the EMS department, um, to date. Or in twenty twenty four, they had one thousand five hundred and fifty calls. Um, which was down over the year before, but the calls are getting longer and more intense. So he spoke about a call that just happened during Thanksgiving, that that crew was with a patient for nineteen hours. So, um, even though the call volume's going down, the, the calls are getting harder and it takes a lot longer. And so they need the support. And that's, and then I went to Chamber Lunch today with Lena Pace.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I'd like to start off with thanking staff for the work that's just gone into this room. I mean, they've done a phenomenal job of repainting all of this and cleaning it up and even up here on the carpets and the chairs and everything. It's just been a great touch. I really appreciate the efforts that they've put into this. Um, I have one comment on the welding shelter. I've been welding out in Castle Valley of late. And for me in the winter time, when that sun goes behind the mountainside there, I can't put enough clothes on. So I'm, I'm dreading it when the sun goes down. I prefer to have.
Oh, yeah, in the winter you want the sun up and the summer you want shade.
Totally, totally. There's a bunch of meetings that we have all attended, so I won't go over all of those. In depth here because others of you have reported on them, but I did go to a Serta meeting with, um. That involved admin in the Grand Center and we are in the process of moving the cooks under the Grand County. So that, it currently, the way the system works, they're paid out of price out of Serta and we reimburse. And so it will work better for the cooks to move them in to the county. It gives better control for Yordi at the Grand Center over that as well. Because typically they have days they've got to go to price for training and for different things, which then leaves nobody to cook meals for the seniors down there. So that's in the progress and probably admin has got more input on that if they want. But we did have a meeting and agreed to take that on. Um, I was also at the USA CCC, which is the Utah State Association of Councils, Commissions and Committees. Of which I am the vice chair of that committee and we did have multiple discussions. The one that was mentioned also that I went away from the most was amazing that rural and urban with the fentanyl issue. Are really equal in the amount of deaths that come out of that. So it, it isn't, it isn't an urban only issue. It's huge. And I know we've all been affected here, but it was a very educational piece for me to catch up.
That's per capita, I would assume, right? Yeah, right.
Yeah. And then I attended the Southeastern Utah Watershed Council with Trish and Brian and Monticello. And they both spoke in depth on that. I was also at the Policy Steering Committee, um, Community Development, where the overlay bill that Mr., um. Lindberg and others have mentioned is coming before us and that's HB thirty seven. There's also a Wildland Urban Interface Bill, HB forty eight, that was discussed at length. It could have some effect on us. And then I'd like to report also on a couple of grants that have come in. And one of them is for the Moab Wetlands revitalization and that's through Guissa. And that was just noticed today that we were awarded that or that Guissa was awarded and that's for six point five million. And there's been a lot of work between Guissa and our leaders up at the state to try and get that money appropriated for that. And that's, um, we, Joel Ferry, the Utah State Water Agent, Teresa Wilhelmson was involved in that as well as Candace. Austin Jaeger, and I probably butchered that, but I do the best I can there. And so there was a lot of work went on to that. And so that will be a huge win for the preserve, for the Matheson Wetlands. And that will allow water to be pumped in there. And then at the exact same time, the city was just awarded from the same department a grant. And I believe that one is twenty one point five million to deal with the sewage to be able to use in the wetlands also. So we've got two of them that'll both benefit that wetlands and the preserve. And the, the hope is, is that Salt Bryan issue that's always a issue down there, will, this will help alleviate a lot of that. And then Melody mentioned the House Committee Resolution zero zero one, which was. To the state is supporting Guissa to be the owners of the pipeline when Umtre is done from Green River over to Crescent. And that passed in the House today unanimously to support Grand County and Guissa taking that pipeline at some point in the future. And then I know that Jock mentioned, um, the grant that was received for TSSD. And I've been in a little bit of discussion with Mr. Bell about that and he's feeling the pressure to get done.
That was the goal.
Thick last week too. Yeah, to, to let him know that we would like to see those numbers. And some of that pressure is actually coming from the state because they, they want the numbers of what's going on in Thompson Springs.
Definitely.
And part of the grant was to help make that available to, which would be now Cash Stallings that took Mark Stilson's job. And so that's all I've got, um, I believe. And so I'll move on to the elected officials and I know we've got the sheriff on and he would like to start us off with the. Other elected officials here, or by Jameson, you're on if you'd like to go.
Yeah, let me, uh, share my screen. If you'll enable that for me.
There we go.
Okay. So I'll just go over our two thousand twenty four stats for the year. Uh, the total calls through dispatch was thirty thousand four hundred and thirteen. That was, um, down from two thousand and twenty three. Emergency nine one one calls, seven thousand four hundred and thirty eight. That was also down from two thousand and twenty three. Calls deputies responded to ten thousand four hundred and ninety one. That was up from the year two thousand and twenty three. Traffic stops, three thousand two hundred and fifty seven. That was down from two thousand twenty three. Our risk, two hundred and ninety nine. That was also down from two thousand twenty three. Our paper service was up at nine hundred and ninety seven papers. And search and rescue calls, a hundred and thirty nine for the year, and that was up from two thousand and twenty three. Any questions on those before I move on to the next thing?
Don't think so.
So we've been awarded a body camera grant from the state of Utah in the amount of ten thousand dollars. We've been awarded a speed enforcement grant from the state of Utah in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and five dollars. That's to purchase radars and lidars. It's just different pieces of equipment for speed enforcement. We've got a twelve thousand dollar grant from the Attorney General's Office to combat internet crimes against children. We've hired our pretrial service deputy, uh, his name's Curtis DeLu. He came out of the jail. He actually worked as a pretrial service deputy in San Pete County prior to coming to the sheriff's office. And so we selected him to be our pretrial service deputy, so we're going to start our new pretrial service here pretty soon, soon as he gets trained on. Uh, the court system here and gets going on that. Just want to reach out to Melody and, and Brian, if you guys want a tour of the sheriff's office property to kind of give you an, an outlay of. What goes on at the sheriff's office and all of our different locations throughout the county, just reach out and I'll take you guys on a tour at any time. And then we've, we have a new communication system inside of the jail. Uh, the commission approved it last year, but we've now implemented it. It's through a company called NCIC. It's actually really cool technology. Each inmate can be issued an iPad. And on that iPad, they can FaceTime with their loved ones if they want to communicate. And then also if they want to do any kind of programming, they can go to that programming and if they complete the programming. They'll get different, um, awards, kind of like you can rent a movie if you complete, uh, different programming. So it's, it's a good program to have inside the jail. And we're getting some good feedback on that. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Jameson. I appreciate it and like to thank Mr. Brewer for being here tonight as well in our presence. So appreciate you guys' support for sure.
You bet.
And Gabe, if you'd like to carry us on.
Real quick, I never dull moment in the clerk's office, uh, right now, myself and Chief Deputy Van Horn, I just started last week. The, um, election, the SARAH certification, which is an election administration certification. It's the only nationally accredited program, so we're really excited. Uh, first session of that was really, um, stimulating and there's, uh, officials from across the country. So it's a pretty interesting program thus far. Now we've got homework to do. Um, and I just, uh, just wrapped up and I'm all caught up now in forwarding appeals or requests for redetermination. To the Utah State Tax Commission, uh, for folks who, uh, appealed before the Board of Equalization. And disagreed with the, the hearing officer's recommendation that was approved by you all, um, in the last, uh, last fall. And Josh Nielsen from the State Tax Commission, he's going to come down, uh, tomorrow and meet with myself and Assessor Swayze. And we're going to sit down and talk and strategize ways that we can, um, sort of work to improve our BOE process. So I'm sure we'll be in conversation about that.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that's good news to look forward to. So, county attorney.
Uh, yeah, and so we've gone on to the next year. We've had two years in a row in the county attorney's office where we've been substantially under budget. Um, we're looking at shifting one of the, um, the, the county attorney's office had ballooned up to three attorneys. And we're looking to reduce one of those attorney positions to a paralegal position. I think that would better, um, kind of address the needs that the, uh, the office needs. So likely here in the next few months, we'll be coming to the commission to ask for that adjustment. It will keep us, um, under budget and we'll look to find somebody that can help fill that void. Um, so we would be excited about that. That would get, give, uh, Chrissy and myself more help in the civil realm. And then maybe a flex person, person to do, um, some of the criminal assistance. We're gearing up. We're gearing up for a jury trial that we have coming up. And otherwise, it's just business as usual. Thank you.
Yeah, and we can go to the administrative team next. And I believe this probably was part of the administrative that I had missed. And that was the update to the agenda submission process. If you want to cover that at the same time, Mark, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that was what I was going to touch on. We have started stress, especially with department heads, importance of getting the agenda items in by the deadline, which is Tuesday, the week before the commission meeting. Uh, we are planning to be very strict about that, just to ensure that you all get the information you need to be able to make decisions.
Bill, do you mind if we discuss that for just a second?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so the on there, it's the uh, we have a late deadline. I I like where this is going. I I think it makes things easier on staff. As far as um, as far as commissioner driven agenda items, I know that we've, that commissioner, any commissioner can bring a item forward and put it on the agenda. And I would never do so outside of a a um, outside of a deadline unless unless I thought it was really important. Um, it it was a little unclear to me whether the whether the commissioner driven agenda items would follow the same structure as the other, and if that would require a change in the in the bylaws.
Of course, we would like for it to be.
Absolutely, yeah.
If if you, any of you have items, you would need to go to either the chair or the vice chair and and get those placed on the agenda.
And that, so that would still be the prerogative of the individual commissioner to do so.
This might understand.
Okay.
Yeah, and I I think we have some room to vet that out still. I think the the goal here is to make sure that we don't have anything that's submitted late unless it's an emergency. And we've all got crazy busy lives as we try and make all of this work. And I think we're just trying to prevent it from stuffs that gets put in last minute. And then both commissioners and the public seem to sometimes be left out and not have that information. So I think I wouldn't have a problem with it. And if we need to look at the bylaws, why then I would say let's do so.
Yeah, under under the, under the rules of governing policy, um, under page nine, uh, number two procedure, there does say that there needs to be six days in in advance of the meeting or unless authorized otherwise. Um, that's on on the policy as it is. I don't know that we've normally followed that, but that six days prior would put us on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So I think permitting it might be permitting maybe a Friday or Saturday item addition might be outside the um, outside the bylaws to be able to do that. But I think if, you know, I think if there's that conversation, I think it would be, it would be good to have. I think one of the things that we're trying to do is balance between the public notice requirements and all the other obligations that the commission has.
Sure, and I wouldn't do that in any frivolous way whatsoever. But I know that we have made exceptions in the in the past for for, you know, things on on a very rare occasion.
Definitely for emergencies, there's always a, there's a difference within the within the policy about that.
Sure.
I guess that's my, is is this just a a request or are we asking to amend the governing, governing policies and procedures? Because if if that's what we're doing, then we probably need to do it via a resolution, et cetera.
Go ahead. It sounds to me like they already are very clear that you have to be six days in advance. So if if we're gonna, sure, we're gonna go outside that exception, then I would say that we would need to check with the chair or the vice chair. And it it isn't anything that we would want to try and prevent a commissioner from bringing something forward. But even when we have our agenda review, which we now have somebody from both sides basically here able to attend those, it makes it much easier if all the material's there and loaded and we know what's going on.
I I understand all that. I'm just, I'm just saying, are we actually intending our governing policies and procedures? Because it, it does, it.
So as it, as it states now, item on page ten, item four, says, request for conclusions on the agenda. Supporting documentation must be received by five P M. on Wednesday prior to the regular council meeting and forty eight hours prior to any special council meeting. Council administrator may extend this deadline when staff time permits, so long as the final agenda is set by the chair. Um, I think we could clean up the language on it, but right now either we're looking at Wednesday prior being the last day. Technically, the commissioner should be able to put things on. But I don't know that the, I don't know that the commission has followed that.
I understand.
So. But I I understand, I understand the concern. Um, but we can, I think that's something.
Well, I mean, if you just want to move it to Tuesday, that's fine. I just think we probably have to amend our governing policies and procedures.
Yes. I'm pulling up the the language of it again.
Okay.
So the the late, I I guess, you know, one could look at it and say that it's pulling up the the deadline by, um, I guess it's gonna be twelve hours sooner. So I, you know, potentially that could be, but then on the other hand, extending it in another way. Right, so, but there there is a subcommittee that's gonna be reviewing that anyways, so.
We can just add that to the list of stuff that needs to be reviewed.
Okay, yeah, so I I would just say if we're gonna amend it, we need to do it.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna go by the rules, we should have been going by the rules the last two years.
Sure.
Perfect.
Brian, did you want to add it?
No, Stephen, I I answer my uh comment right there is we, it seems like we do have a subcommittee and a process set up to go ahead and and review all of those policies. And it seems like this discussion should be happening there first, rather than.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, um, just to clarify, and when I, we had brought this up in our leadership meetings with the department heads, just stressing the importance of getting those in. My comment was not so much to the commissioners as it was letting you know that we have spoken to the department heads to be able to to get those items in.
Thanks, Mark, and I definitely support that policy.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Anything else? Where are?
Uh, administrator report, did Mark, did you report?
Yep, we're through the administrative report. So it looks like we're ready for our public hearing, did that?
Oh, that's six.
We did miss it?
No, no, no. Have we done the commissioner?
Yeah, he he said that he had, so. So then it looks like we're ready for our, we're, and this is an annual public hearing on county mental health and substance use disorder needs. And it looks like this is the commission administrator presenting this. The chair still a public hearing. Okay, and Melissa is online?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would like to just open this public hearing, annual public hearing on the county mental health and substance use disorder needs, and turn this over to Melissa. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm Melissa Huntington. I am the Executive Director of Four Corners Community Behavioral Health. Um, Four Corners, for those who may not know or those in the public, is a private nonprofit organization that has been providing behavioral health services in um counties uh in our area. We used to have four counties. Now we have three counties that we serve for over fifty years. So we're a well established organization and we provide comprehensive services to individuals in our areas, um, anywhere from prevention level to inpatient level hospitalization and everything in between. And so um, we we do a lot. We have a lot of um services that we provide. We have a lot of different programs that we offer to the communities. Um, Grand County has always been a little unique with us because of the distance. Um, our our catchment area is Carbon Emery and Grand. And Grand County geographically is quite distant from the other two counties. Um, Carbon County is where we hold our our administrative offices. But so the unique thing about Grand County is um, we are able to provide full, full spectrum services in Grand County, um, even with um the size being a little smaller than than the uh population in Carbon County. We offer um day treatment clubhouse services. We offer outpatient services. We offer full crisis services twenty four hours a day um and and many, many more things that we provide for um residents of the area. So just wanted to give you a little bit of background um with Four Corners in the Grand County area. Um, and every year we come to um one of the commission meetings to give the public an opportunity to speak about our services or an opportunity to share um anything that they like with the services. So that is why I'm here today and and that's what we're doing for this year of um twenty twenty five. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
And sure, just a note in the public hearing, um, it does state that input from citizens, clients and families will be used in the planning services and decision making during this next fiscal year. So people will be encouraged um to provide their comments and input.
Okay, and so is, are there anybody, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this now or in the room or online? We do have somebody in the in the room. Please come forward, ma'am. State your name and.
Hi, um, my name is Lauren Boker. I've been a client of Four Corners since two thousand twenty. And I just wanted to make a public comment about uh access to treatment uh for specifically feeding and eating disorders. Four Corners has a lot of great programs, like she mentioned here in Grand County, especially for emergency situations, crisis situations. But for addressing chronic complex feeding and eating disorders, there are gaps in service. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. We appreciate you being willing to come forward to speak on it. Is there anybody else? Anybody online? Anybody online that would like to speak to to the Four Corners Health and the public hearing that we're in right now?
Four Corners is a critical part of our treatment team that we have for the recovery program that we have for the for the Grand County area. Um, many commissioners and public, they don't often interact with the recovery port. But it's an opportunity that if an individual uh finds themselves with criminal charges uh based a lot of times in part or because of a substance abuse disorder, it's really an isolating circumstance that a person finds themselves in. And it's exceptionally scary. Um, they are on the opposite end of normally their life, their livelihood, uh, their freedom can all be at risk because of this terrible disease. And Four Corners provides a tremendous amount of help. They handle everything from uh facilitating uh drug testing and then educating the court staff and my prosecution, as well as um Kirk Brewer, who who was here earlier. He's a drug tracker for the drug uh recovery port program. They give a lot of education and without their program and without their ability to provide assistance, um, I think that there would be more O Ds in the community and there'd be less resources. And there are a lot of people that find themselves in a need for the services that Four Corners does. And it's not a fun sought after uh thing to have to deal with. And also, a lot of people aren't going to publicly come out and say that I've been hooked on methamphetamine or whatever the substance may be. And so they need the support of Four Corners. And I can say through my work as a as a prosecutor and as a defense attorney, Four Corners has done a stand up job to address the needs that they have. And it's uh very valuable to have them here in this community. The only disappointing part is that we don't have um beds and we don't have a facility. I mean, it's, it's exceptionally hard because of the uh the lack of services that you have in a rural county. But luckily, Four Corners does provide a phenomenal service.
Thank you.
And so do we just leave this open for this period? Or do we leave it open and close it in later time? My understanding is we leave it open until Wednesday.
It's usually Wednesday at five, that'd be the twenty ninth.
And so i- if there is anyone who doesn't want to come forward and who would like to make comments, please do so. There's ways to do it, written statements, you can do that through email or you could do it with a phone call even to her department down there. So please reach out if there are any comments at all people would like to make and and feel free to do so. And we will close this on Wednesday. And we really appreciate your showing up for that, for this.
Commissioners, oh, apologies. Can I make a quick request? If anyone does reach out to commission members by chance or sends anything to the commission office, if you want to forward those to me, um, I would really appreciate that because I do value all of the feedback we get. And we do, we do try really hard to um bridge any gaps that exist in treatment. And and I just want to be able to address those with um the individuals. So if that's possible, I'd really appreciate that.
Yep, glad to do so. And again, we appreciate your being here.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. So with that, I will move on to our general business action items discussion and consideration of approval. So we will start with number one, which is a volunteer citizen appointments to district and county boards and commissions. And it looks like it's down into the subsets A. So we have a volunteer appointment to the Emergency Medical Services Special Service District. And I think they had their meeting today, and so the names probably just got loaded up. Jac, go ahead.
Yeah, I this, the names were on there previously, but because they did have their meeting today and we just were forwarded the um recommendation letter a couple of hours ago. Um, in, I mean, just in keeping with the with the spirit of 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 the previous conversation about uh submissions to the agenda, I would, I I don't really care that much, but it it seems like it would be more appropriate to have this particular um uh um volunteer appointment at the next meeting because we hadn't, we hadn't gotten a letter of agenda until literally like three or four hours ago.
They they had all of their, um, because they knew that they're running late on this. They had all of their, everything was submitted. All of the applications were submitted. The only thing that was not submitted were the names of who got voted on today. And also that that um new summary or the amendments to the agenda submission process, it goes into effect tomorrow.
Yeah, and I don't have a, is there a reason that we would not want to consider these now?
Well, I think there's a reason we need to. It seems like there's something happening soon that they need to have a full board before their next meeting. If I remember right, they mentioned that at the meeting.
I think we should, I mean, I I would make a motion to approve it.
Um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to point that out. I think, you know, getting getting that letter the last second.
And I appreciate that, so go ahead.
So, yeah, I think that it it's fine to make the motion. They don't meet again till March, but I moved to approve the appointments of of um Jim Webster and Elizabeth Tubbs to serve on EMS Special Service District Board with the terms expiring December thirty first of twenty twenty eight.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner McCandless, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Um, any discussion, any further discussion here?
All right. Sorry, Chair, for the record, those were the two members that were recommended by the MS Board.
Yes, they were recommended by the MS Board as well.
Yeah, and those names are still blank in there, too.
They're on the bottom. Um, they have it filled out on the very last summary. It's it's submitted on there, see.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against?
I'm just gonna abstain.
But just abstain, okay. So that passes with Commissioner Hadler abstaining from voting. Six to zero. Okay, and so we will move on to the second one then. That is a volunteer appointment to the Planning Commission. That is um. Brian, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I move to appoint Megan Schaefer to serve on the Planning Commission with the term expiring twelve thirty one, twenty twenty nine.
And we have a second, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, we'll open it up for discussion, Jac.
Uh, I'd actually make a substitute motion to uh to approve the appointment of Ellie Swanson to serve on the Planning Commission in accordance with the Planning Commission's uh recommendation for that board.
Any further, any discussion on the second motion?
No.
And then we can discuss.
Okay, we'll start with Mary. I think she was the first one out the gate.
Oh, I, I watched the entire portion of the interviews. And uh, I was, uh, both candidates were good, I will say. I do feel uh that Ellie had more qualifications than the other. that Ellie had more qualifications than the other in her application and such. And when I watched the meeting, Aaron didn't vote because he felt like, he predicted somewhat what was going to happen at this meeting that, that there would be a group that would not support Ellie because of her work on, on Atsuwa. And so that's, if, but he was felt like, very much felt, at least when you listen to the meeting that I asked him when I saw him in our break, that if he hadn't felt like there would be objection from the present council, he would have voted for Ellie. And my, my, my thing is, I, I hate to see a person discriminated against because of where they work. I mean, a lot of people have been on the planning commission who have been developers, who have been real estate people, who have really have more of a possibility of a conflict of interest than someone that works for an organization that the county, that the planning commission does not even really deal with. They don't deal with public land. They deal with county land, not even city land. They deal with county land. And I just, it just to me is like not wanting to support someone because they're Republican or Democrat or Christian or Muslim or something that, because someone belongs and is employed by an organization that some people don't like is not a valid reason to oppose them.
And Jacque and Trish, it looked like it was a tie.
I got it. No, no, I got it, Trish.
I guess I'll, I'll point out a couple of things. I obviously am the lead on to the planning commission and just to reiterate, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation for the appointment of Ellie Swanson and that passed three to two. Both of them did an amazing job. And if you watch the entire meeting, I think you will see that outlined by the current planning commissioners and they stated that, but they also went through what stood out to them. And one thing I'm going to point out specifically to our two new commissioners who are very much, I assume, in support of affordable housing initiatives. Megan stated that affordable housing wasn't really an issue with her. She didn't feel that it's an issue with this county. Ellie stated again and again, specifically with the demographics that are surrounding her and in her age. You know, she finds that one of the largest issues that our county is facing, and she gave a plethora of really creative, creative ideas to mitigate that issue. And so if you're concerned about affordable housing in this county, she's the one. She's the one who pointed it out. Megan didn't feel that it was an issue. And that's concerning to me because if we're going to be fighting for those mitigating factors, we need a whole planning commission to be on board and ready to fight that fight. If you don't think it's an issue, you're not ready to fight that fight. And I, you know, I think we should go with their recommendation. I, it, it breaks my heart. We have a really hardworking planning commission, very articulate, very educated, and they did an excellent job articulating why they chose the person that they chose. And if you didn't watch that meeting, you might want to not, not take the time to vote on this because they really did a great job. And it, I would go with their recommendation.
Jacque, I, I just add that there's commissioners here who have spent the last couple of years espousing the, um, the necessity to support our boards and who, uh, on numerous occasions have, have, have said that they would go along with the board recommendations on previous, um, on previous votes, especially on a couple of votes we had last year on the Gwissa board. There was, uh, there, there were similar recommendations of, of splits. And I think the exact words were that, uh, we were meddling with the boards by not supporting the candidates that they put forward. So, um, I'd just like to bring that back up and, uh, I personally never espoused that belief, but I do, after having watched the, uh, the meetings, I am supportive of the planning commission board's recommendation on this one.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, thanks. So yeah, I did watch the, the planning commission meeting. And, um, to get to a couple of your points, you know, I'm not, um, you know, I've known Ellie Swanson's worked at, um, Holiday Rivers and, you know, and I love Holiday Rivers and it, it doesn't have to do with that or her current work right now as, uh, working with the NGO. You know, the, the reason that I bring this up is I actually really liked Megan Schaefer's, um, uh, response questions right here. You know, first off, I like the way that she starts off, you know, I think it's important for locals to start getting involved. Um, and, and, and I completely agree with that. You know, I want to see more locals getting involved and stuff like that, even if they might be a little bit less qualified. It feels like their, their contribution is valid. You know, and then as far as, you know, Jacque was saying, listening to the boards, um, I, I think that I'm listening to the boards. What I'm not doing is I'm not following just the recommendation. I listened to each one of their explanations of why they voted for each person. There was two people basically that voted for, um, one person because they, they thought that, that the candidate, um, shared their views on water. And then I saw another one of them say that they voted for this candidate because they share their views, uh, the walkable and bikeable, um, town. And while I think that's great, um, you know, I, I, I would look for a board that's a little bit more diverse, right? So that we're getting some different perspectives. I also saw two of the commissioners vote for, for another candidate and they voted for them because one, that they think that they could bring a strong working relationship with San Juan County. So they could bring something new to the table. And then I also saw another commissioner say that they have, um, that this person has a, um, you know, a kids inside of our grade school, right? Which is a view that's not represented right now on, on the planning commission. And I also think that that's very important. Um, and then to get, you know, to the point of, uh, affordable housing, right? I, I, I think that maybe Megan Schaefer misspoke right there. Um, she, she got into a house here in Grand County using HOSSU funds and, and the workable program. So, you know, I don't think, I don't think that I'm actually really seeing, seeing that come from her. So for, for those reasons, I disagree. And for that reason, I would still support Megan Schaefer. Thanks.
Anything further? If not, let's call for a vote on the, the substitute motion by Mr. Hadler and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. All those in favor of the second amendment portion of this substitute motion? All those against? So the amended or substituted motion fails and we move back to the original motion. Fails three to four. Thank you.
And now it's the people that voted in opposition, you have to.
Those voting in opposition, thank you, were Commissioners Winfield, McCandless, Martinez and McCurdy. Thank you. And so now we will, discussion returns back now to the original motion. Right. Any discussion on the original motion? Mary, go ahead.
The other candidates are local as well. So I, I, I think they both bring a local perspective. So I, I just thought, you know, that would, to me would not been a reason to vote for the other person. But yes, I, if we move this forward, I, I don't want, I don't want to be lectured again about not following the rules of, of following the recommendation of the boards because last year I was really lectured. You know, because I went against one of the board's recommendations. So, you know, if this is what's going to happen, I think it's better. I think it's okay. That's what I argued last year. I think it's okay for the board to say, you know, that's our job. So that we choose somebody else. I've always felt that that was appropriate. So I'm just requesting that I'm never lectured about it again.
Melody, go ahead.
Okay, I, I did watch the entire, uh, meeting even after, after they got done with their, um, board selections. But, um, I think that they were both really great candidates. I think everyone on that board did say, um, the reasons why. Um, one of my concerns is that we do want a very diverse board. And when everyone is picking their choice because they agree with them or it fits their, their agenda, um, that's what, what puts up red flags for me. And when one of the, um, planning and zoning commissioners were just discussing water and how he has to recuse himself from those votes and, um, talking with the suggested person about recusal as well. And so if we're having two people recuse themselves because of water issues, I don't think it's a very good thing on a board as well. So I think Megan will do a great job as Ellie had a lot of great, um, assets too. And I'm really happy that we have multiple people on applying for those boards. So we have options.
Yeah, Jacque. I, I don't think, uh, I mean, I, I watched it also and, and Ellie, Ellie didn't have to recuse herself on water issues. It was more, uh, it was, uh, like, um, you know, wildlands interface issues. And it didn't sound like there was many issues to recuse on, but there, uh, my understanding wasn't that there wouldn't be two people who would have to recuse themselves on water issues. That was different.
Commissioner Hadeen?
So I'm going to just kind of go over a couple of notes that I took. I took extensive notes during the lecture, uh, during the interviews. And again, I want to reiterate for those that are truly working for affordable housing, which a lot of you have stated that again and again. Um, Megan flat out said she does not think affordable housing is an issue. She's thinking affordability issues are by restricted development. Ellie talked about, um, she talked about more, more programs such as HDHO to being creative with incentives, creative housing that is truly affordable, working with MACAL to provide them land, retaining mixed characters throughout our community, communities that are walkable and bikeable, having small commercial nodes. She had read the entire land use code. She came better prepared, period. And she is looking at and understanding of what we need regarding affordability. That was my take on it, you know, and I truly want affordability. I want us to be working hard for that. And I think she's a better candidate for that.
But I think we can all speak to the fact that all seven commissioners here are working hard on housing. And I don't think that it's any different lecturing on following a board's advice anymore than it is on lecturing on being a commissioner up here who is for housing. If that's the word term that we want to use as lecturing, why I think we just received one. But what I do know is that as commissioners, everybody here, I, I don't doubt any one of us are working on housing. And I can show, if we go back in history, we're very likely, at least the five of us have all voted in favor of housing and we've all voted against certain housing projects. So I, I don't think that's the equation that we want to weigh in here. And if there isn't any more discussion, why, I think that we'll move for a vote on it. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the original motion? Those opposed? The motion passes four to three. Those opposed are Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner McGann. And thank you for that. And we can move on to the next one, which is a volunteer appointment to the council on aging. And I will open that up for discussion or if somebody wants to make a motion on that one.
Jacque? Yeah, I'll make a, sorry. I'll make a motion, Bill. Let me just open up my thing here. I move to approve the selection of Karen Fury, Patrice Class and Sheri Majors, returning members of the Grand County Council on Aging Board with terms expiring on December 31st, 2027. And I would note that, uh, those names were put forward as recommended by that particular board.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Commissioner McCandless seconds that. Do we have any discussion? All right. So we can call for a vote on that as stated by Commissioner Hadler. All those in favor? All right, that passes unanimously.
Can I, can I say something really quickly? I, my computer, I don't know if it's internet or what, but every time I move to a different agenda item, I have to go back. I have to.
You have to, yeah.
What do you have to do? Oh, okay.
I'll speak to this. And I, and I know that there's been some stuff up that when you open the link in a new tab, it shows up halfway down the page. You scroll to the top. I've never heard it from everybody before, but today I've heard it from everybody. So I'm aware that it's happening. Scroll up the top. They're still there. It, it just started with this agenda. It hadn't previously happened.
It never happened before.
We discussed it.
But mine, mine won't, I have to close out every time and open back up for my work. I'll see if I can get it on my phone.
Okay, so we can move on then to the volunteer appointments to the travel council advisory board. We'll open that up. Jacque?
Uh, I would move to approve the appointment of Wendell Williams and Sharon Kinsley, uh, to serve on the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board with term expiring on 12/31/2028. And I would, uh, I'll say I'm, I'm moving to approve those two. And there's three positions on the board. So, so I would, um, recommend another one separately from my motion.
But where are we at?
Uh, we are on the travel council advisory board. Yes. And I just, I just moved to approve Wendell Williams and Sharon Kinsley.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we approve, um, Wendell Williams, Howard Trentholm and Sharon Kinsel to the travel council.
Do I have a second for the amended? Commissioner McCurdy, discussion?
I didn't try to beat you.
Jacque?
Um, I would not be supportive of Howard Trentholm to serve on this board. I'd be supportive of the other two. Um, Howard had previously, uh, he, he's been on the board before. He'd previously applied two years ago. Um, five of us voted on that. And he, uh, was voted against six to zero with one abstention. Um, I don't want to go into why I don't, uh, I wouldn't vote for Howard without going in closed session. I'm not recommending that we do so, but, um, the same concerns that, that four of you remember, uh, apply to this candidate for me.
Anybody else? Mary?
I was on the travel council when Howard, uh, Trentholm was on the travel council. It was a very disruptive, dysfunctional board. And it wasn't just me that felt like that. And, uh, there were people talking about, uh, quitting. A lot of them. And, you know, I, I just am concerned that he will be a disruptor.
Melody, go ahead.
When I watched the meeting, there was a vote six to one abstaining. So I figure if anyone on that council would have had those same issues or concerns at this point, they would have brought them forward and someone else would have been suggested by the board. Anyways, I watched all the votes, watched the comments and I feel that Howard's, um, do great on there.
Anyone else? You know, I, I will state that myself included and all kinds of people go through times in their life. And I'm not sure where Howard was back in those days, but the Howard that I've seen in the last couple of years has been very respectful of what he's done and brought in front of this commission here. So I'm, I'm supportive of that nomination as well. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the three, that actually, I'm sorry, that was an amended substitute substitute by Commissioner Martinez and seconded by Commissioner McCurdy, I believe. Is that right? On the second. So we will, we will vote on the substitute motion now. All those in favor?
And Chair, perhaps cleanly stating those individuals that are, that are.
Never mentioned. Okay. And that is for the three, Wendell Williams, Howard Trentholm and Sharon Kinsel to be appointed to the volunteer appointment to the travel council advisory board. All those in favor? Those opposed? Passes four to three. Those opposed, Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner McGann. And I believe that is the end of our volunteer appointments at this time. And we move forward to an item that I believe Mr. Jackson is going to.
He, yep, I can, I can present it. Okay. Just loading this load up. So this is a proposed easement that will solidify the public roadway access across the Lions Back property, which the grantor has obtained in fee simple title from SITLA on the San Flats Road. Through this action, the county, uh, shall have perfected and defined easements on two short segments of the San Flats Road. Uh, Red River Consulting prepared the documents which county roads and my office has revised and approved. Uh, Red River Consulting prepared the documents which county roads and my office has revised and approved. Um, we have confirmed, drive confirmed that the county has all right of ways and easement. Uh, our county surveyor, Lucas Blake, has signed off on the legal description. Additionally, the documents have been reviewed with sufficient language and they're valid and legally reported. Easement agreement is limited to maintenance and the use, and the county maintains all immunities under the law.
I move to approve the easement agreement for Sand Flats Road.
Second? Commissioner McCurdy seconding. Do we have any discussion on this one? No? Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the easement agreement for the Sand Flats Road? Passes unanimously with one absent, Commissioner Hadler. And we will move on then to the advertising opportunity in the official guide of the Grand Circle Association. And I don't see Mr. Fred.
They'll be in any moment.
Okay.
Get that one faster than he probably.
Voice from above.
Apologies, Bill. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just know they're coming.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yep, thank you. Yes, please come forward. Thank you. Sorry, we had a long commute.
Yeah.
Definitely take it away. Yeah, all yours.
So, um, thank you. We're here to, uh, ask for approval to, uh, put and add in the Grand Circle, um, travel planner. This is part of our strategy of not just being in the mighty five loop. This is the four corners loop. And, uh, this is kind of timely in that we have a January twenty fourth deadline if we're gonna make it into an inside cover ad. Uh, this is part of our strategy to get a more tour promotion mentality into, uh, Grand Circle than what is previously there. Welcoming at a, um, this is, this is a travel loop that, for a very reasonable price, has a lot of, uh, reach and touch. We're here to answer questions of, uh. Anybody? Brian, please.
Uh, the only question I have is, has the travel council advisory board had a chance to look at this yet?
No, this is standard part of our strategy. This is, I mean, we don't put every ad in front of with the major campaigns, but I think going back, we, to go back and look, and they know that we, we join the Grand Circle, that it's part of our strategy, so.
Sure. I would just say, uh, my only recommendation would be moving forward that, you know, the travel council advisory board has a chance to look at this and, and, you know, approve ads and, and kind of, uh, make recommendations on if this is something that they approve on or don't approve on. But otherwise, I, I personally agree that the Grand Circle is a great idea. Um, it's a good organization. It's a, it's a good market for my lab, so.
Melody?
Um, there's three options on here. Are you, do you guys know which one you're picking, or is that something that you're asking us?
Asking, we're actually not asking for ad direction or we asked it. I mean, I'll say right here, we don't ask the advisory board that as well. It's that line of operations, but, um, we're showing the, the, the ads that we have that will work with love on. And come back with a, with a, with love. It's our, our agency of record. It's part of a bigger strategy. But what, being that we're doing this today is we don't have a preapproval list and we're still waiting for it to be moved over. Uh, we'll come in with a comprehensive marketing campaign plan that we workshop with you all before doing these all at once. And this needs to fit into a plan. It's just getting this in now. This is already in the twenty twenty six plan for love, but since we didn't have it in love this year, we don't want to miss the opportunity. That's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah, Trish.
I move to approve the advertising opportunity in the official guide of the Grand Circle Association in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars.
Melody seconds? Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, no, and maybe, uh, Mary and Melody, that's something we need to look at is, is I do believe that in the bylaws of the travel council, I think one of their duties is to review the advertising that comes through. So we just might want to further look into that, um, in the future.
Yeah, and I would support that also. I, I would say also that I've had the opportunity to speak in front of this group when they were here in Grand County and appreciated that invitation to come and do so. And I, I agree, this has, um, great value for the impact of what it hits. I, I think the bigger message or the part of the message also is that I think this commission just wants to make sure also that travel council has an opportunity to look at it as well as that we're moving towards a more welcoming advertisement to our customers. And I, I think that's your hit, so. So any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of advertising the circle? That passes unanimously. Thanks. Oh, we will move on. It looks like this one is being presented. It's a resolution approving the final plat for San Juan Planned Use Development. PUD and Amy? It's all yours.
Hello, thank you so much. Uh, this is a, uh, Commissioner Winfield mentioned, uh, this is an application for the final PUD plan and final plat. So I can pull up anything on the screen if you want me to do that in a second here. And, uh, this was approved, uh, earlier in twenty twenty four. And, uh, so the applicant is finally requesting the final PUD plan and the final plat. So staff is recommending approval. They've met all of their requirements, uh, for the development agreement and the previous ordinance that approved PUD. Uh, and this is for three workforce housing units and they will be deed restricted accordingly. Uh, there's a few changes staff is recommending, uh, before, uh, we record the Milar. So we have the, we don't have the Milar yet, so I'm requesting a few changes. But other than that, um, staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions?
Anybody? Trish?
Well, no, I was gonna make a motion. I move to approve the resolution for the approval of the San Juan PUD final plat.
Motion made, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further discussion? Alright, call for a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Amy. And we will move on to item number six, which is accept the Utah Airport Revitalization Grant for landscaping projects at the air, oh, excuse me, sorry, I missed number five. I'll back up. Sorry, Tara. I know you're online there for us. So this is the adoption of the Canyonlands Regional Airport Plans for the Title Six Civil Rights and the CPP, Community Participation Plan, and the DBE Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. And Tara, I will let you take it from there.
Okay, hi, everyone. Uh, Tammy wrote a thing for me to read. The airport director. Okay, airports must adhere to several critical requirements to qualify for airport improvement program funding. That's from the FAA. Including the establishment of Title Six plans, a disadvantaged business enterprise program, and a community participation plan. Each of these elements plays a vital role in ensuring that airport operations align with federal regulations aimed at fostering equity, diversity, and sustainable development. First and foremost, Title Six plans are essential for airports to demonstrate their commitment to non-discrimination based on race, color, or national origin. Under Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four, any entity receiving federal assistance, including airports, must ensure that their programs and activities are free from discrimination. If an airport fails to implement a compliant Title Six plan, it jeopardizes its eligibility to receive AIP funding, which is crucial for various infrastructure projects and enhancements. In addition to the Title Six requirements, the implementation of a disadvantaged business enterprise program is equally important. This program is designed to create equitable opportunities for small businesses, particularly those owned by minorities and women in the competitive bidding process for airport contracts. Airports must have a well-defined DBE program in place to assure that these businesses are included in projects funded by AIP. This not only supports economic growth within local communities, but also enhances the diversity of services provided at airports. Furthermore, the comprehensive planning, I'm sorry, Community Participation Plan is instrumental in guiding the strategic development of airports. The CPP involves engaging with various stakeholders, such as the community, airlines, and government officials to create a long-term vision for airport operations that reflects the needs of the community and promotes sustainability. An airport lacking a robust CPP may struggle to make informed decisions regarding future growth and improvements, ultimately impacting its ability to secure AIP funding. In summary, airports that do not possess Title Six plans, a functioning DBE program, and an established community participation plan are unlikely to qualify for AIP funding. Compliance with these essential requirements is not only a legal obligation, but also a fundamental aspect of promoting fairness and innovation in airport management. Ensuring these frameworks are in place is crucial for airports to access the federal assistance necessary for enhancing their infrastructure and services. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Any discussion? Anybody want to make a motions? Doc?
I move to adopt the Canyonlands Regional Airport Plans as written for Title Six Civil Rights CPP, Community Participation Plan, and DBE Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program.
Motion made by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Any further discussion? Alright, call for a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, Tara. Thank you. We can now move on to the sixth, number six, accept the Utah Airport Revitalization Grant for landscaping projects at the airport.
Okay, Tammy wrote me another one. The Utah Airport Revitalization Grant is a new annual funding opportunity to support the visual aspect of airport facilities and grounds. The grant is open to all airports in the state of Utah. Awardees will receive funding on an agreed payment schedule based on selected projects. Two hundred thousand is the total amount of funds the State Division of Aeronautics has each year to be allocated. The goal of this grant is to support multiple small projects at airports while enhancing the airport's visibility and aesthetic. This grant does not take away or add any, add to any existing ACIP Airport Capital Improvement Plans or ALP Airport Layout Plans. Airport personnel have conducted a thorough assessment and identified multiple unattractive and difficult to maintain areas at the airport entrance, presenting a variety of options for potential enhancement. The specific location chosen for enhancement was prioritized due to its prominent visibility upon entry into the airport. The purpose, scope of work includes grading of the area, the installation of a weed barrier to prevent unwanted growth, and the application of decorative rock to elevate the overall aesthetic appeal. The airport staff will undertake the work themselves, which will significantly lower the overall costs of the project. By utilizing in-house resources and expertise, the airport can allocate more funds toward materials. This approach not only helps in reducing expenses, but also fosters a sense of ownership among the staff involved in the improvement efforts. Initially, there was a plan to construct an enclosure to effectively conceal the dumpster from public view. However, ongoing discussions about the optimal placement of the dumpster led to the consensus that for the time being, the focus should remain solely on enhancing the landscaping. This grant is designed to support airport management and securing funds that may not be readily available through local funding sources, particularly in light of the current prioritization of financial allocations. CNY Airport is committed to leveraging this grant on an annual basis, provided that the state continues to approve such funding. Furthermore, once a design for a new entrance sign for the airport has been finalized, efforts will be made to utilize this grant to finance its construction, the entrance sign. And there's, there's some photos in there of the area we want to improve.
Yeah, thank you, Tara. And I'll, I'll give a little update too. This also came before the airport board and it's the entrance. As soon as you pull off of Highway one ninety one and the majority of it would be on the north side of the entrance road there. It's a hanger there currently down in the hole somewhat. And then there's a, a hill that's pretty much covered in sagebrush and tumble weeds and different things. And it's just gonna break that up and improve appearances there, so. I, I think everybody on the board was in favor of doing so. So, yes, Mr. McCurdy.
I'd like to make a motion. I move, move to accept the Utah Airport, the Utah Airport Revitalization Grant for forty six thousand five hundred fifty dollars for airport landscaping projects.
Motion made by Commissioner McCurdy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner McCann. Any further discussion?
I, I wanted to add that there's no match. There's, there's no county match for this grant.
Awesome, thank you. Makes it even better. Alright, call for a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, Tara. Two in a row. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we can go on then to the, looks like tourism promotion, Gabe Film and Economic Development Budget Fund Transfer from Fund sixteen to Fund twenty three.
So as has been discussed, um, to, to be aligned with recommendations and findings, uh, that the state auditor presented, um, when there, it, it was suggested that, uh, using a fund titled Economic Development, which had been Fund sixteen, which was adopted, um, in relation to TRT legislation that allowed for uses related to economic development, um, it would be more appropriate to, um, discontinue use of a fund with that title, uh, for administration of TRT dollars, uh, that were primarily, uh, for the purpose of, uh, establishing and promoting, uh, recreation. Um, that's thirty seven percent of the TRT that is collected by Grand County. Uh, one-fifth of that thirty seven percent is, uh, qualified, it, it, um, it has a qualified use of recreation, film, and convention. And the other four-fifths, um, strictly for establishing and promoting tourism. And so, um, you know, that, that was, uh, done hastily, um, for adoption of the twenty twenty five budget with the intention that there would be clarification that we're, um, doing now. And I'm glad that we're getting this over with soon. And, um, I, I presented in the packet a very clear document that shows, um, how that transfer was made. Uh, there are some yellow shaded, um, cells in the Funds twenty three, twenty twenty five budget on the right-hand side that, that, that delineates, uh, account lines that hadn't existed before in Fund twenty three. So those will be new account lines that we will create, um, as part of this process. And there's just, you know, bottom lines that show that there, you know, that this was a, you know, a direct one-to-one translation of what was approved for the twenty twenty five budget. And then there is another and there is another document that is included in the packet um, based on feedback that we received from y'all regarding the need for more detail regarding individual lines in the, uh, in the travel council budget or the economic, current economic development department budget. And sorry, I'm just taking a second here to pull that up. But I have a hard time. There it is. Uh, so that's called supporting material, um, and that gives, that gives some more line-by-line detail of, of some of the, some of the major categories and the higher, especially some of these larger items like the one point six million that is, um, uh, you know, falls under that sort of, that paid media type, uh, category. Uh, creative services, which had a, um, you know, has that, uh, branding effort built into it. And so hopefully this, uh, illuminates, um, some of these, some of these lines, uh, to, you know, in a way that is, uh, you know, more transparent and is more easily understandable by, by the commission and the public. And so I think that that's really, as far as the presentation goes, I think we've kind of discussed the need for this and, and what happened. And I think this is a, a, a pretty detailed summary, um, of, of that, that, that process.
Is a vote needed on this, or is this just something that, uh, that the clerk is able to do unilaterally?
Um, I know that we have it in here as an action item. I would think that we need to do a vote on this. What we're looking for?
Yeah, first, I, I got a couple of questions. I'll, I'll do my best to try to put it all into, into one big question so that we can chat here. So on finding four, um, from the, uh, state auditor, um, we was found that we were paying economic development, uh, um, out of the TRT restricted funds. Um, on that, we did a time study. And on that, uh, uh, the, the director was, uh, spent ten percent of his time on, um, economic development and then ninety percent of his time on, um, on the, uh, I'm sorry, ninety percent of his time on, on, on travel and advertising. Um, the assistant director spent sixty percent of his time on. Um, the assistant director spent sixty percent of his time on. Uh, economic development and then spent forty percent of his time on travel council. Um, and then plus there's an, an ancillary cost that kind of are involved inside of that as well. My question is, is when I look at the budget right here. Um, I don't see that, that time split reflected, right? I mean, if I look down on Fund sixteen right now, I see straight zeros all the way across. Um, so where is that, that, the transparency that I'm looking for is where is that reflected inside the budget? Um, one of the questions I have is, is the department that we have right now, economic development, does it have two functions? Right? And then, you know, a follow-up to that is what percent is economic development and what percent is travel council? Right? And then if, you know, if, if there is a split there, how are we funding the economic development part of that right there? And then can it be funded by TRT? And, and I know there's lots of questions that I, that I have right here. Um, and then looking back as well as the, at twenty-twenty-four. I don't see, I don't see that that was, that that's accounted for in twenty-twenty-four even. Right? So we have twenty-twenty-four where there's problems and then twenty-twenty-five where I still see that same problem persisting right here. You know, and then there was, there's one other little thing I have and I, we can touch out about that. Um, but what, what I would recommend is, is that we can actually sit down and we can look at this with that time study. Um, in that subcommittee with, uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioner McGann and Commissioner, uh, McCandless. Um, on Monday and we could actually go through this kind of line by line. And make sure that it's, that it's broken out and that, and that we, that, that it's not only that I can understand it. But that it's transparent to the public as well as where these funds are, how they're being spent. Anyways, sorry. I, 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 I actually got a, a, a motion right here. I mean, here, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. Uh, I, I move for the Economic Development and Travel Council Subcommittee, along with the County Clerk Auditor to review the twenty-twenty-five adopted budget. To provide recommendations for the commission at the February fourth meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner. Martinez seconded by Commissioner McCurdy.
I want, I want to see on the budget where economic development is being funded.
Every question. I, I'd like to see the line items. Uh, part of the board's gonna be going over it. I'd like to see the findings or the line items and the findings from that three-man board before decision made next. I, 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 I mean, before making a decision about, about, uh. Meetings involving another elected official, I, I just ask the clerk to weigh in and, and, uh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to provide all the information that you seek. I have no concerns about. The, you know, the use of funds as was outlined and recommended by the state auditor's office and. Um, you know, so for a portion of. Monies that would go to support economic de- uh, development activity by staff. Um, we wouldn't see that in. Either of these funds budget, so it would come out of a line in the general fund, which is what we've agreed to fund that activity. Um, so this, this document would have had to show, um, lines, um. You know, that would have been budgeted for to cover the, that, that element of economic development activity. Uh, so very well it may, has, may should have been included or, or, or footnoted perhaps. Um, right now, as it currently is built, um, there's, and I, and I should have, I should have, um, sort of. Let off with this or made sure to include this in introducing this item. Um, but there's. Uh, twenty-three, three, eight, eight, two is titled reimbursement from the general fund. And, uh, and rather than just leave that at zero, I, I actually, I added a parenthetical that says to be determined. Because the, the, the strategy that I decided to employ to, to resolve the dynamic of, um. Staff time used towards economic development activity was to, um, log, you know, ju- uh. You know, basically use that, those agreed upon splits. And as we reached the end of the year and we know exactly what the, um. The cost and salary and benefits incurred by. The Economic Development Director and the Assistant Act and Economic Development Director for that type of activity. Um, we, we could make a very, uh, a very precise reimbursement to Fund twenty-three from Fund ten. Um, in accordance with that recommendation. It, it otherwise wouldn't, it wouldn't show up in this budget. Like I said, we would budget for it in a line in Fund ten. Is the best way to put it, um. And so, um, I, 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 I just, I see that as a, a pretty efficient and. And precise way of, of handling that dynamic that, um. Because that, it, you know, it prevents, um, having HR and payroll getting into. Um, splitting up, uh, the check runs, uh, for salary and benefits each, um, for each payroll period. Um, and it allows us to kind of maintain standard practices. Um, not create unneeded complexity and just create a reimbursement in accordance with that finding. Um, but again, um, uh, Ian, as it relates to twenty-twenty-four, um, I'm happy to demonstrate, uh. The, the entries that I made in the accounting system that, um, demonstrate, uh. You know, the, the agreement with those findings that were made. That's no problem at all.
Yeah, thanks for that, Gabe. And then, like I said, I do apologize for spiring off so many questions at it as well. So it's just, it's just my understanding of this is I'm not seeing. You know, where these funds are being spent at right here. And I, I know that there's other people that I've talked to that just don't understand it. So, um, that would be great if we could sit down and we can chat and you can go through this line by line and explain to me how this has been broken down. Um, but I also think it's also a good opportunity to see that. That the way that maybe this was handled of this time split might not be the most efficient way or the easiest way to represent that. Um, by having economic development and travel council inside of that same, inside of that same office right here. Uh, I know that there was talk in the organizational, uh, uh, meeting that we had. Maybe going back to the way where we had it as, uh, community development. So moving economic development into community development, which would probably push it more often to planning commission. Um, if nothing else, just for the appearances, right? Just so that when people see it, right? It's like, this is, this is, these people are here and this is here and it's a, and it's a very clear line.
Yeah, I mean, that, that sounds like a, a thing that you would definitely want to work with your administration on as it relates to staffing and their assignments. Um, so I don't really have much to comment on that.
I, I guess I would add, uh, out of respect to you, Gabe, are you fine with that, with the meeting with the subcommittee that Ryan mentioned?
I thought we already set it up.
It is set up, yeah.
Yeah, I think you, you have invite for Monday. Is that time gonna work for you? I think we already had it set up. Eight o'clock. I think it's eight AM on Monday morning.
Yeah, actually that is, um, if there wasn't time on Monday, that would be the time.
Okay, and I think we've got Ben Fredericill on that invite as well, so.
And didn't we invite Steve Bowles?
I'll look at the invite. I don't.
Should Steve Bowles be there as well?
Sure he's on the invite.
Any other discussion?
Um, Brian, just could you repeat your motion, please?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. Uh, I move for the Economic Development and Travel Council Subcommittee, along with the County Clerk Auditor. To review the twenty-twenty-five adopted budget and provide recommendations for the commission at the February fourth meeting.
Any further discussion? All right. So noted, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Those opposed?
I'm gonna sit it out too. It just, yeah, I.
To abstaining, so the motion passes five with two abstaining, Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner Hadler abstaining. It looks like the next one is you as well with the USU Extension Services.
Bail at six.
Oh, it is time. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, we do have a second citizen to be heard, which happens as close to six o'clock as we possibly can, so. Are there any, or is there anybody in the commission chambers? Please come forward.
My name's Teresa King. You guys. Do a great job. There's a big transition going on and I appreciate all that you're doing. My request today, and I have talked to a couple of, of staff about this, is I would like you to consider. Designating a public information officer for the county. I, I myself try very hard to understand when public notices are out. Or when information needs to get out. I, um, am happy to. Invade that information through the vehicles that I am responsible for, which is of course the advertiser and Moab Happening is when it's appropriate. To let people know about things that are going on. And especially the good things. So for example, what brought this to my attention was. Uh, the, uh, state audit and all the information about that. Now, when they came and released those funds. There is no press release to the community except for a comment that was made in one of the last meetings. I myself would like to publish that information to the community and let them know that this is a good thing. And that this has been resolved and is moving forward. Among many other things that you need to communicate to the public about. I believe this is a different position than when you're talking about a PR person. And that, so I understand there is conversation about a public relations person, but what I'm addressing is specifically a public information officer. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to speak? About anybody online? Did we see anybody? All right. So, Ian, anybody in the chamber? Any takers? All right, we will move on then. I appreciate that. Gabe, we will come back to you regarding the cooperative agreement for the USU Extension Services.
So this is an agreement that we renew each year with the USU for the extension services that they. Um, provide in collaboration with the county. Um, particularly for, for Melody and Brian, uh, you all, um, may not know that they provide the, um. They provide the facility, uh, the offices where the extension services are, are housed, um. And then we split half and half the. This, uh, department costs and, and salary and bene- and compensation associated with the staff that runs the extension. Um, and so that's essentially what this agreement sort of outlines and, and it's just renewed, uh, year to year. Um, this was approved by the attorney. He had, he had a couple of small relatively immaterial adjustments. But I appreciate his review of that and, and, and catching some things that can be approved about it, improved about it. And then the, the budget figures that are included in this agreement, we usually do this early in the year after the new year budget has been passed and approved. And so the figures that are included in this agreement are, 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 were built into the process of building the twenty-twenty-five budget in general.
I'll move to approve the cooperative agreement for USU Extension Services.
Motion made, seconded by McCandless. Any further discussion? All right, call for a vote. Oh.
I, I just, I think this, this is a great benefit to the community and, and well worth the price of admission. So I'm, I'm glad we do this every year and appreciate the effort that, uh, USU and, and the county put into it.
And I'll add too, also, I think this adds to what we currently heard earlier today about the fact that they've hired the Small Business Administrator. With, um, Mr. Thompson personally. I think this is just part of what we receive as a community for what they do up there or what the community receives, which comes from. Grand County tax, right? So. Um, I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously and from there.
And, and Chair, the, the, there weren't any minutes included in the packet, so, um, you can skip those for approval, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. So then we will move on to the consent agenda. Um, that. We'll start off with no minutes being presented at this time and we will go into the ratification. And payment of bills and we have. Total bills in the amount of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. And total payroll of five hundred and ninety-five thousand. Eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. For a total, uh, bills and payroll of one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents. And then moving through the rest of the. Consent agenda items, we also have the ratification of HMGT application documents. The Old City Park Road and Kirby Lane vented low water crossings. We have a toilet contract, Grand County Sand Flats Recreation Area and Soonage Brothers Mechanical. As well as the annual Emery Telecom Grand County Sand Flats Recreation Area Agreement. And finally, the subcontractor par- partnership agreement with Moab Area Community Land Trust. MACLT and Grand County for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG application. So I will open that up.
Uh, move to, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Um, Commissioner Hadler, motion made and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Is there any further discussion on any of these?
No discussion on dissent, Bill, or on consent. No worries.
I appreciate you walking me along.
Yes, you got, you're doing great.
And so. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Passes unanimously and we will move on. And this is one that, um, Commissioner Hadeen and I both have been working on a little bit and. Um, based off of an email from Commissioner Hadeen. I don't believe there are any presenters planned today. It was just a discussion item.
I just wanted it to be a really, um, quick discussion. I mean, a couple of years ago, we kind of approached the subject, but that's not what this is about. We had, um, Sina come forward with an incident. She's really concerned. And so I think it is time for us to kind of pull together some stakeholders and start talking about. You know, what are the issues at hand? What are some possible mitigating factors that we can put into play? And so when I talk about, you know, who, who those stakeholders are. We talk about the land management agencies, we talk about, um. Various aeronautics, I don't know how you'd say that, Bill. You're a wing, you're a fixed wing flyer. I don't know how you'd state it, but, but those user groups, um. You know, people like Sina that had an incident, um, the issues we were having a couple of years ago, but we haven't. Seem to really be getting that kind of fervor anymore. It was, that was really related to. A specific helicopter that seems to have kind of drifted away, which is, is great. So I think just, um, if you guys are okay. I can kind of lead that charge with the administration and putting together some kind of forum where we bring together those entities and just talk. And that's all I really wanted to bring up. I wanted to honor Sina's request that we move forward with some. It was a pretty, you know, um, my partner's daughter works for Sina and luckily she wasn't on that ride. But you know, that some of their guides are very young. You know, in this case, you know, very young girls and to have that happen and all those horses and all those people get hurt, it was a big deal, you know, and seeing it. Dealing with, you know, a lot of horses and vet bills, et cetera, and so on. So I think just, it's just discussions. You know, and Ian, Ian's, you know, will definitely, yeah, he's not here tonight, but you know, we know that he wants to be involved with those discussions and so. If you guys are okay with me proceeding with that, I can kind of start. Steering that ship.
And I'd like to comment just a little bit because I, I too have been in communication with both sides of that. I know that. The Sheriff's Department has the name of the individual that, um, caused these problems. I think. Some of the concern from the group is that we don't allow one bad actor to spoil it for everybody and that as we move forward. They, uh, and it was Mr. Mitchard and another individual that reached out and they would really like to put together some kind of a website. That shows areas that they, that people shouldn't be flying over. And so that they're definitely wanting to work and not. See this be a knee-jerk reaction where there's some kind of a blanket where they're not allowed for their activity. And so. Uh, I see some value with both sides of this and being able to work on it and move forward and definitely all. All of the people that can come forward and come up with some solutions. But I think that the paramotor group that Mr. Mitchard.
Right.
Represents, and I don't know what his position is or anything with him. They're, they're all about trying to solve problems and they don't. I, they don't even know who the individual was, so it could have been. I, they don't even know who the individual was, so it could have been a visitor or somebody who's not familiar with our area and, that they would like to see that move forward through the Sheriff's Office also.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering if you guys had an idea of what the, how the discussions might, look like if we had them at the county commission meetings, if we set up something separate, like.
I thought about doing something se- separate and having it more public, right? I can, I can, we can obviously advertise to the general public and have people come. Um, you know, maybe we even think about, and I'm just throwing an idea out, hiring an actual facilitator that can kind of facilitate that conversation. I don't necessarily want to facilitate that conversation, but I, my thought is just like, what are the issues and how do we mitigate those issues, you know, without actually making laws, right? You know, how, yeah, how do user groups mitigate their own impacts? Um, because, and I'll state, and I, and I agree with you, Bill, I think that, that Fisher Towers area has been one of those hotspots, right? In the past, they were actually landing helicopters on some of those towers, coming to a lot of issues with, and you know, jumping base jumpers and, it's just a lot of issues that come with that, right? Hikers beneath them. I've climbed those towers. They're not very stable, so. You know, I think it really, I just see it as more of like a discussion and then how do we collectively mitigate some of those issues?
And I think they definitely want to be involved.
Yeah, yeah. And the other part I was gonna say is when you, you were talking about when we had, when this came up, uh, I think it was a couple of years ago. The, there was the helicopter, but we also had quite a bit of, um, citizen complaints about noise from the pair, was it paramotors? Paramotors in Spanish Valley especially.
Really tremendously, and I'm not sure why.
Public land, they don't have to be over.
They were taken off at the old airport and, and just flying around Spanish Valley and it was not that cool. Um, so yeah, it seems like those, it's, it's really died down.
All right. Yeah, no, and, um, you know, I, I, I actually talked to quite a few people. I mean, I've used Sina's services, you know, quite a bit, um, for my clients and I thought about, you know, what would, what would I think if, you know, my clients had happened to my clients out there? And, uh, you know, I also have an employee that's, that's one of her gods out there and lives out there. So, you know, I have a, I do have a personal, uh, connection with this. Um, but I also do want to, you know, kind of state that's, this, to me, this kind of comes down to a risk management issue. And, you know, when, when any of us use public lands, whether we're hiking, um, you know, definitely if we're on horses, right? Cause I mean, they're, they're dangerous animals, just like if you were on a raft, or if you were up in the sky, right? We're all taking an inherent risk and we all should make sure that we're, you know, recognizing that risk that we take when we go out, out there. Um, it seems like this individual incident right here was, was an exception, right? This person was, you know, it seemed like clearly, underneath the deck that he should have been at and, uh, uh, you know, and is responsible for his actions. And I, and I do agree that we need to see, that, you know, that there's some follow-up and that there's, uh, um, you know, that there, there's some, um, uh, results, you know, consequences for, for that person's actions. Um, but one thing that I do know about in, in risk management, right, is we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that we're not managing for the exception. Right? We don't want to be spending too much of our time managing that one exception, uh, when we're out there. Um, you know, there's been lots of studies through risk management, you know, about managing for the exception. You know, when we, when we do something like that, we focus all of our resources on that and we forget on spending, you know, our risk management time, on things that, you know, are less than that. And, you know, I personally, you know, I, I have friends that are in, inside of that community and I don't see that traffic anymore coming out in Spanish Valley. Um, I even see it less up in Sand Flats where I'm up all the time, um, to where, you know, they're flying around. So there are lots of locations. And I do know that they were already kicked out of, uh, I think like the Gemini Bridges and, uh, Labyrinth Rims area. There were some closures out there, um, that they've already been targeted to. Um, so I just, I, I would want to make sure that we're being very careful, um, that we're not taking a reactive approach right here. And basically, you know, the rubber band or the yo-yo, you know, going all the way from one side all the way to the other.
I don't think I'm implying that at all. To have a discussion and hopefully those users will come up with their own strategies, right? But, if we're all at the table, yeah.
Yeah, Ja, go ahead. Yeah, and, and, and bringing them to the table is absolutely great. There, and as far as risk management goes, this is, I think this is a situation where you have certain activities that are just inherently more impactful. And, and bringing everyone to the table and discussing it and, and figuring out ways to mitigate those impacts are essential. And especially getting, I mean, I think it's good for this community because it is, it seems like something that's, I mean, I, I don't recall these things being around ten, fifteen years ago, but getting in front of the curb, you know, if, if it is a growing segment of recreationists, then, then I think they'd want to be part of the conversation before they, you know, cause more impact and then get themselves banned from more places.
Yeah, I know Lynn Ottinger had one, at least ten, fifteen years ago.
And I, I will say again, I'll reiterate it, that they have already reached out and they do want to participate. So I, I think that's valuable from their side as well. It's not a, Mary, please go ahead.
Well, I want to thank you for taking the lead on this. And, uh, I, I am, I'm excited about it because the best, uh, policies come from when you have everyone around the table that's impacted. That's when you come up with good legislations and good policies. And so this is the beginning and it will probably be a process for, you know, quite a few months before anything's brought to the table, if anything is brought to the table. But thank you. That's a big commitment and I appreciate that you've taken it on.
If that's okay, then I'll allow that our county attorney to weigh in.
Yeah, just back to Commissioner Dean's idea. Um, I think having a facilitator, there could be a good idea. If you're looking for, it depends on like what we're looking for. Are we looking for a mediator, an arbitrator, or somebody? Um, sometimes if you're looking for, uh, somebody that's got industry experience, I'm happy to help select or try to find somebody. The one hard thing is depending on how nuanced it is, they'll want to sell you a package deal and it'll be like a RFP for sixty thousand dollars to help. They'll come and sell us the rainbow, the whole nine yards. Um, but you might find, you know, Utah and every state has, um, trained mediators that do these things and you could get them down on an hourly basis, like two hundred bucks an hour, have them come down, set it up. I think that would probably be, maybe more effective, but if you kind of have a goal, what you have in mind, um, that might be easier than having somebody try to locally try to, manage the conversation. So just, if, if you have, if you, if that's the route, if you guys want to go that route, I'd, I'd recommend, um, somebody a professional like that.
Ja, ju- uh, just suggestion on the mediator is, is, uh, who's the professor that was the natural resources guy at USU? Was it Wayne Fried?
They hired somebody. They charged very little. USU charged very little. So that's another rabbit.
Yeah, there's, there's a retired gentleman that used to do mediation that almost did a really good job for, um, for different matters and it depends on how you want to structure. Do you want everybody in the same room? Do you want them in different rooms? You know, so if you guys get down that route, that's, uh, ADR conflict resolution is one of the things attorneys like, instead of suing people.
All right, if there is no further discussion then, I would look for a motion to go into closed session.
I'd move to go into closed session, um, to discuss purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property as well as pending a reasonably imminent litigation.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
I'm gonna take thirty seconds. Unless you're all gonna kick me.
We have the whole week, we have that form of action.
Mark, is your son in school?
Yes.
Oh, great. Awesome. What's he, what's he think?